Let's get started and let's start with the West Side Boundary Correction. Who's going to be doing that?
Judy.
Good evening. So you have a packet in your...
Yep.
In your packet is information about a small boundary change that we recommend. It's a correction from a large set of boundary changes that happened about two years ago. Due to the delay in implementation, it wasn't until last spring that staff was approached by some family members who live in the area with questions. We did some research. We met with the Enrollment and Forecasting Committee in June, received positive feedback to move forward, and now Superintendent has a recommendation to make two very small changes. The total impact is 53 households, currently 17 students K-12. And that is a very brief overview, and I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
So can you just do a really quick summary of what the change is on?
Yeah. Yes. In your packet, you have a map that might be helpful, like this. And you're welcome to mine, or I don't know if there are other versions. But this is the area that drew a new boundary line between West Sylvan Middle School, Lincoln High School, and Robert Gray Middle School, Wilson High School. The way the line was drawn in April 2016, it used the center line of Shoals Ferry Road and named sort of a point that would stop, that the line would stop at Shoals Ferry Court. That was a technical error. It was never intended to stop at Shoals Ferry Court. It was intended to stop at Raleighwood Court, which is a little point down here at the bottom. These are about three-quarters of a mile apart. So one of the things that you're doing is correcting that technical error and making sure for all time that Raleighwood Court is named as the correct line there. The second thing is that while the center line of... We usually use center lines of streets to define boundaries. One of the issues that led to this boundary line in the first place was the transit routes that students in this area have to high school. And it was... There was significant discussion about that. It led to eventually drawing a line that was intended, we believe, to make sure that kids on both sides of Shoals Ferry Road had equal access to the transit route along there. It's not a great route. There's no sidewalks. But it's... What the center line did was mean the kids on the west side of Shoals Ferry Road have access to a bus that goes directly up and into Lincoln High School, and you can get there in about 25 minutes. But the kids on the east side and the little streets that empty only on Shoals Ferry would have different transit routes that you have to connect through, and it takes closer to 45 to 50 minutes to get to Wilson High School. Parents raised concerns to us because they saved the materials that they had from the meeting, they saved the map that PPS sent to them immediately after that showed that the line was in fact along this edge and not the center line. So we're bringing to you a recommendation that moves it from the center line of Shoals Ferry Road to a line that is... Allows us to incorporate both sides of Shoals Ferry Road and the households that feed only onto Shoals Ferry Road. So these are... This is a very hilly area, if you're not familiar with it. A lot of dead end streets. If you want details, and we'll keep these details in the records, the actual tax lots that create the line is here. Again, so that however many years from now this line still exists, people will be able to define it.
So I just want to make sure that the students affected by this... Sorry. The students affected by this boundary change aren't having to... Like you were talking about the transportation, like that isn't massively increasing for them? This is so that the transportation is either reducing or staying the same?
It's reducing.
It's reducing. It is reducing. Okay.
Is Beaverton Hillsdale then link here?
Beaverton Hillsdale Highway will be south, and it would be in this area.
So this is north of Hamilton. So it's actually 26 is just north of the map a bit. If you keep going up Shoals Ferry.
So one of the things that we did was consult with board members who were present at the time of that vote, and they confirmed that they felt that the intent was to have both sides of the road represented in the final line instead of be split down that center line.
So just to be clear, so on this map, to the left of Shoals Ferry Road, the beige, what's... Where is that going?
That has been and will continue to be West Sylvan-Lincoln.
Okay.
And the greenish area is the part that will revert back to West Sylvan-Lincoln.
Any questions, Scott?
Does either our policy or our AD on this specify what kind of outreach we're supposed to do? Is there something like we're supposed to have meetings at schools as part of it?
A minimum of two meetings. Since this is a technical correction to a change that we had literally dozens of meetings on, we went a smaller route with this. So each household in this area has received a letter explaining the change and giving them an opportunity to attend these meetings. We sent the information also to the principals of all the schools, but we didn't conduct meetings around it. It's simply because it's technical corrections to something that all...
What's the number of households that are...
Fifty-five.
Small households. Seventeen, please. Yeah. Seventeen or...
K-12. So one and two students per grade level. We're in the midst right now of sending our high school letters. We send a letter to every student who's in the highest grade, in eighth grade of their current school, letting them know what their ninth grade track is and the high school transfer cycle starts Thursday. Of that set of 3,400 letters, we found one letter that would pertain to this area. The student is also in immersion, so it doesn't actually affect them because they'll continue in their immersion path to Lincoln, which would become the new school anyway.
So the committee recommendation back in June was...
Make the change. Can I make one editorial comment? So this was a policy... This was a boundary change in 2016. And if you look under fiscal impact, it says at full implementation in 2022. Six years to have full implementation of a boundary change. I'll just let that sit.
That's all.
Will there be other opportunities? Okay. Any other questions?
So in this... Just to be clear, I think that's a technical change, just to follow in your hope. But what we'll be approving is... So I'm going legacy, right?
But, well, I mean, this is... It's a...
It's fixing a previous...
It's fixing...
It's fixing a previous legacy.
Yes.
I'm interested if it makes sense in terms of the transportation and the area.
Yeah. It was basically the map we posted was inaccurate, and that's what we're using to steer families.
Regarding implementation, of course, Board has the right to change the period of implementation. Policy as it stands today is that it begins with incoming ninth grade students. I need to point out that in the same resolution in which the Board made this set of boundary changes, the Board also guaranteed that everyone who lives in that split Bridle Mile area has transfer rights into Wilson High School. So this is a difficult one to even envision, full implementation, because there's additional options. There was a delay in the initial implementation. There are additional options. But if there are kids, for example, that are at Wilson now that you'd like to have transferred to Lincoln to implement this faster, we can do that, even though technically they haven't guaranteed to stay where they are.
That would be by family request.
Certainly anyone who's at Wilson and wants to go to Lincoln has the right to request it and it'd be guaranteed if they submit it during the transfer cycle.
I think this is an easy process. I mean, it's a small amount of students, and it makes sense given the geography of the area of transportation.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So this is going to be on the agenda for coordination. So, okay? All right.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay. Do we have a visioning update?
As you all know, it's going to be an interactive hour. So...
I'm just going to sit closer to here because I brought Fiona, and she's right here. She's on mute, so you won't hear her, but...
Hey Fiona, order me a...
So thank you, Board, for having us engaged. So as you all know, you've all wanted to be engaged in all aspects of the visioning process, including the design of some components or of all components. So today, we're going to be having a conversation about Guiding Coalition 1. As a reminder to the Board, there will be three Guiding Coalition convenings. These Guiding Coalition will be made up of a diverse group of stakeholders from the entire community, which you all have been actively working on. On top of those Guiding Coalitions, we are designing a number of community-wide sessions to engage the broader community in the conversations that are happening at the Guiding Coalition. So again, today, we're going to be focused on the design for Guiding Coalition 1, which spans, again, two days, a Friday and a Saturday. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Sonia and Fiona, who's on the phone, who have been helping us and leading a lot of this effort and working with all of you. So turn it over, and I'm going to be taking notes for the hour that we have together.
It's a good evening, everyone. You're going to like... So you might have noticed these next to you, a Sharpie and some paper up there. So just a mental warning that we'll do a little bit of that today will be, just like the Guiding Coalition, a little bit of having people watch us do it, but be nice practice. What is... I thought you were going to throw that at me.
Sonia, can we just clarify? SLT, would you like to...
If they'd like to, they're certainly welcome to.
So I would encourage SLT members to join the table if you are able to participate in this hour-long conversation.
It won't be as elongated as the last time we were together doing multiple ups and downs, but we'll do one session of it and love to get as much brains and thinking as possible. So we're... As you requested a while back, we're going to engage you in these sort of mini designs along the way. We're going to get your insights and design thinking into this process. Tonight, we're going to cover two things. One is I want to walk you through a high-level overview of the agenda for Guiding Coalition 1. And Jonathan, actually, can you pull down that one flip chart that's got the blue tape on it? As I walk through it, ignore the stuff at the top because I think we'll just go through and ask you all to think about... We won't do a think, pair, share exercise on this tonight, but if you can read it, I'd like you to think about, like, what questions come to mind when you think about this, you know, each section of the agenda. So I'll walk through it in a little bit more detail than maybe what you've got. I'll just talk through it out loud. What do you want us to keep in mind and consider as we plan the details? So we're going to take some of these inputs, and we certainly will be getting them from the core team as well, and we'll do some further design. So just any advice or, you know, thoughts that you'd like us to keep in mind? Anything from general flow to as you think about that particular agenda item, don't forget X, could you consider this? We really just want your thinking on that, all right? So I'll just do a high-level agenda update on that, and then have you share that with us. The second part is, as you might recall, when we did our mini experience, one of the things that we did was personas. That was when you got to meet somebody that had some elements of, you know, characteristics. You went to a mandala with a group, and you brainstormed some more characteristics. We just did a mini exercise about that. And one of the things we heard was sort of the importance of making sure that it feels customized to Portland and some of the stakeholders that you have here. So what we wanted to do is just take one particular persona, the parents, and have you help us customize it by giving us some thoughts around some specific characteristics of different kinds of dimensions that we have in our stakeholder called Parents in Portland. It'll be a general brainstorm. We're not going to ask you to cluster them into a persona. We'd like to just know the breadth of the kinds of things you want to make sure that we understand about your constituents, and I'll give you some examples. We'll have you brainstorm them, put it up on stickies, and then we're just going to grab those and take it away. All right? Does that make sense? So two particular activities. Any questions? All right. So, oop, I just went blank here. So in terms of the agenda for Guiding Coalition 1, it's a day and a half. The first day, we're getting together, you know, later in the afternoon to allow those people that are working to be able to come to, not necessarily an evening session, but probably late, late afternoon through dinner. And then, as well as allowing students who are in school to come after school. And then we'll have an all-day Saturday. So as in typical sort of conference-like things, of course, we'll have registration and welcome, and they'll be assigned to a table, and we'll have table facilitators already welcoming them into a welcome activity right away so that they feel as if they're coming into something where, you know, there's engagement right away and welcoming of it. Our core team members are actually going to be table facilitators, so we'll have... Be walking through the design, and they'll be sort of very intimate with what the agenda's going to be. So they'll be part of that process. And then I think another thing that you all know is really important is making sure sort of everyone kind of has a sense of who's in the room. So we'll do a couple of things. This is where perhaps some of your ideas could come into play. But typical things we've done in the past is gather some provocative quotes potentially related to things like, you know, what does it take to change a system or equity or other provocative quotes like that? We'll put it around the room and have people just go to one that just moves them, and then just engage in a conversation with whoever's gathered there. So that might be an activity. Or we do a quick sort of popping up and down of just getting a sense of, you know, who in the room are parents? Who went to school here as students, if you're a parent? Who... How many of you just moved into Portland in the last five years? Who have been here over five years? So we'll just get a temperature check of all sorts of elements, just to start to welcome people and have them feel as if they have a sense of who else is in the room. Other ideas that you might have would be really welcome. So that's one thing that you can share with us at the end of this section when you give us some input. The topic of the first main day is to really kind of provoke people into some inspirational thinking about the future. So we'll have a panel of different futurists that we're still gathering and trying to get sort of commitments on. But it could be anything from sort of general futurists to futurists around social and notional learning supports of the future, the future trends of that, future of ed tech, or certainly future of the workforce. So it's going to be a... Not proctor, but what's it called? Guided panel?
Moderated.
Moderated. Thank you, Director Anthony. A moderated panel. And so we'll, you know, start off with sort of questions for each one, but hopefully have them start to engage with each other and then open it up for a conversation with the audience. And then people will go back to their tables and really start to discuss with each other some of the things that they heard with their table mates. And that's really it for the evening. It's really to start to get the juices flowing. We want people to go home and sleep on this and get ready for the next day and network with some of the new members that they've never met before, as well as old colleagues that they know from past. So that's it for day one. And then day two, we roll up our sleeves after sort of a group, you know, reflection on something... The reflection of the panel discussions the earlier day. We'll jump right into the Three Horizons exercise that we did during the mini experience. The change we're going to make, really, it's a lesson from the mini experience here, is that not only will we do sort of the regular exercise where we brainstorm Horizon 1, Horizon 2, Horizon 3, but we'll also ask people to sort of map backwards, you know, like sort of from the back to the front, the front to the back, middle out, to try to expand that horizon, to make sure it really is going out, and try to push it. So we'll do a little bit of that exercise to find... To expand that timeframe now, but also to see if we can create a thread. So if you put something in the far horizon, can we thread it back to mid horizon, and can we thread it back to something that's more early horizon? So we'll do that exercise really based on learning from what we did to get together. So once we've kind of thought through the horizons piece, we'll jump into the personas. And so some of the attributes you give us later will help us, you know, personify or Portlandify the personas. We'll first gather in homogeneous groups. So if you happen to be, you know, Miguel Mendoza, and you'll gather with the other Miguel Mendoza's and get to know who you are, start to use I-statements and build out an understanding of this particular persona and this attribute. Now, I'll have you as a group introduce your persona to the audience. Now that you've got grounding in this persona, then you'll go back into the heterogeneous groups and work in scenarios. And again, we're building out the scenarios. That'll probably be another, you know, session or email feedback session from the... And then all of that, of course, is to build up towards the final exercise of the day, which will end up iterating over time with the community input, as well as coming back to the Guiding Coalition and end up being one of the deliverables for the visioning process, which is the graduate portrait and the educator portrait. So we'll be end the day with some brainstorming and some exercises around fleshing out what some of those elements for the future graduate would be and the educator that supports that future graduate. That's generally the arc of Guiding Coalition 1, as well as signing up for potential learning journeys between Guiding Coalition 1 and Guiding Coalition 2.
So just to clarify, when you say end of the day, that's the end of the day Saturday?
End of the day Saturday and end of Guiding Coalition 1. So any questions first, and then we'd love any insights you might have or, you know, potentially things that you'd like us to remember as we're doing further design.
So something that might be helpful at the beginning is just a general introduction to Gen Z. As we... Not this evening, but just in the sort of introductory sort of panels of setting the stage. I think they're a different breed than millennials, and it's interesting to, I think, to just get a sense of who as a large cohort these students are that we're planning for.
So introduction of the panel to the context?
Generation Z.
Just of who Generation Z is generally, it's like what their attributes are and how they're different from millennials.
Gotcha. Because we're talking 2030 and... Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
So just as context setting, so when I look at the demographics of who's going to be at the table, so an understanding... I just went through a presentation of this at the day, and they're different than millennials and what motivates them, what their attributes and, you know, the demographics. I think it's going to be interesting to have that context.
Depending on who's starting to view as part of it.
Okay. And there's also research showing that this millennial versus other stuff is... I think demographic differences are fine to show, but this aptitudes of different generations, I frankly don't buy. I think it's a generalization that I don't think is very helpful. Drawn that out there.
The demographics are very different.
Yeah.
Just with their different life experiences.
And we can certainly characterize, maybe not label, but certainly, you know, even things like digital immigrant and digital native is a term that's come up in the past to describe differences in generations and how custom some people are to other things as they grow up with them. So we might be able to characterize some things like that versus just labeling them.
And I'm fine with those kind of differences, but the... This generation feels this way, operates this way, has these... I don't think we should go there.
And please welcome your...
It's already provocative.
You're just saying that because you're...
This is what... Any other thoughts on the agenda? Anything else you'd like us to keep in mind? Thinking about the mini experience, some of the advice you gave us there. We've got all those notes, but any other new thoughts come to mind?
I was curious, will we stay in the same table groups through all of that? So we're going to be like the team?
You're going to be like a team. Although, that's a really good question. Definitely through Guiding Coalition 1.
Right.
So those two days. Yeah. So you'll build some.
But not maybe... Maybe not necessarily through two.
Yeah. Maybe not necessarily. And even within Guiding Coalition 1, you'll kind of have two teams. So you'll have your team that's the same persona as you, and you'll together sort of build out something and take it back to your other team that is representative of multiple personas, not only the, you know, the made-up ones that really, you know, have attributes across, but yourself. You bring yourself to that table, too. So we will be balancing the tables and assigning people based on a good balance.
Okay. So we'll have a...
You will. Yes. You can't all sit together. I'm sorry.
It's like wedding.
Huh?
It's like wedding planning.
Like wedding planning. There's so much of this that has felt like that. I can't tell you.
And so just on that point, you can assume that the logistics of the logistics are being met. So finding location, making sure that access and ability, you know, access is available, translation is available, interpretation is available, so daycare is available. So we're taking care of all the logistics. Again, welcome input. We can do that offline. We want to make sure that something is captured, but for today's, you know, session, we'll ignore that piece and welcome suggestions offline.
You'd be happy to know I'm not interested in setting the table.
What?
I know.
So I went to the core meeting a couple... Last week, week before. And you had us do an exercise in sort of writing a profile. And toward the end of it, I think it was Fiona, somebody, I think it was Fiona, came up with like a nice explanation about the purpose of the profiles. Could you...
I wasn't there, but I'll give it a try. So why are we doing it? The purpose of it? Yeah. So personas are basically a tool that we use to represent sort of a broad spectrum of attributes that we want to make sure that we keep in mind as we design, as we think through who your stakeholders that you're designing for are. None of the personas will actually be like in whole, probably a person that you know, but across the spectrums of personas that we have. And so we'll have several. We'll have a few students. We'll have a few parents. We'll have some community members and certainly educators, internal, you know, educator type of persona. They should represent a broad spectrum, and they should be, I would say, quite different from each other, so that when you start to look at, you know, attributes across them and you start to design to them, you're covering a lot of different needs and... and you start to design to them, you're covering a lot of different needs and perspectives, et cetera. So it's a way to broaden out sort of not just who you are at the table, because all of you are also a set of personas. We want to make sure we're thinking about edge cases that might not be present at the table, or present in the room. So that's why we build them out as a tool. And what we've been doing, a little bit of what we'll do later with the parent persona, but certainly we've been working with other teams to think through educators, student ones, is taking your advice about making sure when you read them in these guiding coalitions, you want to sort of recognize them. You know, they feel like somebody that could be in Portland. And so that's where you all come into play, because we don't live here, right? So give us the gems, help us contextualize it. Maybe you mentioned a neighborhood, or maybe you mentioned a particular after school program they go to that gets services in certain areas. Those kinds of gems that we can wrap around our personas certainly makes it a little bit more feeling like they belong here. So that's a little bit of a longer explanation than the purpose, but why we also want to engage you all in some gem seeking, as we call it, to make them customized.
What I'm hearing in all the comments is that if we're going to engage in this conversation about developing a vision for the future of the school system that serves all of our students, we want to recognize what that diversity represents, is representative of. And so how do you talk about a future if you're not taking into account all the diverse student population and families that we serve? And so I think that's the point, right, is that it be an all inclusive process in our thinking.
And educators as well, because in some ways you also serve the educators that are serving the students. So, you know, let's make sure we design things that encompasses their needs as well.
I can't remember if you've done this, and I haven't found it or forgot that you did it. Wonderful getting old and having plenty to do. Not only the personas, but also the three horizon exercises. I sort of vaguely remember the outlines of it, but remind us just a brief summary of what we're doing there, where does it get us, what's the output of it, the same with the scenarios. So just a refresher on what those are and what we as a group will get out of them.
Yeah, so the horizon exercise, you remember, was sort of built into three different horizons.
Something in writing.
Oh, yeah, okay. I can get that. Yeah, you know, you're right.
I could write it down, but.
Jonathan's taking notes. We'll definitely get you something, yeah. Anything else on the agenda before we begin to jump on to the next activity?
So just editorial statement. I think we'll have a pretty diverse group in terms of racially, culturally group, but not by income. And I don't know by region of the city as well, so I just want to plant that. And that's another reason why doing the broader community outreach is very important.
So next up is a little bit of design input. What is the time? It's got to seven fifteen.
Seven.
Seven fifteen? Southern?
No, seven fifteen, we can't see it.
Okay. All right, I will be able to do that. So I'm just kind of rethinking things, but for this exercise, we're going to be doing it a little bit different from core team. And I think what I'd like for you to do is do some individual thinking first and brainstorming on these post-its. And think about, maybe think about a couple of different parents that you know that live in this community that you serve. And maybe very different parents from each other. And just one sort of dimension per post-it. You know, we like the one idea per post-it idea, and so that we can move them around and cluster them. So if you could write down all the different ways that you can think of in between these two that they are different from one another, and these are just general attributes, general dimensions of difference. So for example, you might, these are very high level and simplistic, and we'd like something a little bit more robust in the end, but, you know, you might say that home language is English, home language is not English. You might further talk about that their native language is Russian versus their native language is something else. So we really want a rich picture as much as possible of the kinds of dimensions that exist here in Portland.
So it's one concept, not one word?
One concept, you're right. Yeah, yeah, home language, yeah. But as many as you can, so just try to brainstorm out all these different characteristics and as different as, if you think about real people in mind, sometimes it's easier to come up with these. So brainstorm as many as you can, about five minutes, and then we're going to have you put it up on those sheets, mostly because then it's easy for me to walk away with them.
So we're doing a series of pairs that are contrasting, one attribute per.
Yeah, basically. How are they all different from each other?
English speaking, Russian speaking, we might have high income, low income.
Yeah, or you could have, here are the five languages that are most pervasive in England, in Portland, and then have five different stickies on that. But when you think about different attributes or different dimensions, what are they?
Which color stickies are we supposed to be using?
It doesn't matter the color, everybody's got a different color.
Is this just everyone, or did you say just parents?
We're thinking about parents in particular.
Parents.
Yeah. So if you're sitting at the table, you all have stickies too, and you're welcome to please contribute.
Sorry.
No, one per, one per, yeah. easier to think of things are coming out first, I want to sort of encourage you to think sort of a next level down as you think about your next set of brainstorms. So for example, I'm trying to come up with one, if you had written down some different dimensions about race, for example, you might think about naming different ways that, you know, things like structural racism is impacting different kinds of races. Does that kind of next level down in describing the experience? Anything you might come up with that talks about how the experience of structural racism might impact different races? That's just kind of a next level down from race. Or if you think about, if you talked about multiple jobs, for example, might be another dimension. Well, is it multiple jobs because they're working two part-time jobs and going to school? Or is it because they're into the gig culture, right? So that they're, the gig culture, which is a term that's coming up these days around people who have two or three different kinds of projects or jobs? Like, I'm a gig culture person, right? Every time, I'm totally living example of one. So I work, you know, gig by gig, but I cluster into a project, so maybe that's why I have three jobs. So just give us a, that culture might not be here in Portland, so I'm just, I don't want to put those words in your mouth, but thinking about Portland culture and parents that are here, another level of who is here. it up here and see if we can cluster it together, like ideas, see what you come up with. It's just. Sorry. Because. For one. Yes. I can't remember. Describe the next. I think I can. You know how to switch. Thank you for the. Yes. Yes. But what it is, is to take a little. No, well, I, I like how these. We're like. Yeah. Anyone from China? I can. I wish I could use a. So I know it might be hard, because there's a lot of different stickies up there, but if you, if any of you wanted to come up here and sort of notice patterns, I always ask that pattern question. Or not patterns as much as what comes out as being really quite prevalent or, I mean, it's just all over the place. You're generating, noticing, maybe that's the right word. Pink is on it. Pink is on it. Danny. Sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Anything else on the agenda before we begin to jump on to the next activity?
So just editorial statement. I think we'll have a pretty diverse group in terms of racially, culturally group, but not by income. And I don't know by region of the city as well, so I just want to plant that. And that's another reason why doing the broader community outreach is very important.
Okay. So next up is a little bit of design input. What is the time? It's got to seven fifteen.
Seven.
Seven fifteen? Southern?
Twenty, no, seven fifteen, we can't see it.
Okay. All right, I will be able to do that. So I'm just kind of rethinking things, but for this exercise, we're going to be doing it a little bit different from core team. And I think what I'd like for you to do is do some individual thinking first and brainstorming on these post-its. And think about, maybe think about a couple of different parents that you know that live in this community that you serve. And maybe very different parents from each other. And just one sort of dimension per post-it. You know, we like the one idea per post-it idea, and so that we can move them around and cluster them. So if you could write down all the different ways that you can think of in your, between these two that they are different from one another, and these are just general attributes, general dimensions of difference. So for example, you might, these are very high level and simplistic, and we'd like something a little bit more robust in the end, but, you know, you might say that home language is English, home language is not English. You might further talk about that their native language is Russian versus their native language is something else. So we really want a rich picture as much as possible of the kinds of dimensions that exist here in Portland.
So it's one concept, not one word?
One concept, you're right. Yeah, yeah, home language, yeah. But as many as you can, so just try to brainstorm out all these different characteristics and as different as, if you think about real people in mind, sometimes it's easier to come up with these. So brainstorm as many as you can, about five minutes, and then we're going to have you put it up on those sheets, mostly because then it's easy for me to walk away with them.
So we're doing a series of pairs that are contrasting, one attribute per.
Yeah, basically. How are they all different from each other?
English speaking, Russian speaking, we might have high income, low income.
Yeah, or you could have, here are the five languages that are most pervasive in England, in Portland, and then have five different stickies on that. But when you think about different attributes or different dimensions, what are they?
Which color stickies are we supposed to be using?
It doesn't matter the color, everybody's got a different color.
Is this just everyone, or did you say just parents?
We're thinking about parents in particular.
Parents.
Yeah. So if you're sitting at the table, you all have stickies too, and you're welcome to please contribute. Five minutes.
Sorry.
No, one per, one per, yeah. if you, if any of you wanted to come up here and sort of notice patterns, I always ask There's a Viking. All right, so I think I'm going to change up the exercise a little bit. And ask me to come back up here and grab a few. So like, it's like shopping, right? Create a cluster of attributes or dimensions that might all belong into one person. And so you might just go and grab some and then just sort of cluster it around so it starts to build out a particular persona. If you could stay on the paper, I'm actually going to put a couple more pieces up here because mainly because I'm going to have you right next to them and then I want to be able to kind of walk out without making a lot of noise. So if you could come up here and just grab a few and start to build out a particular cluster of attributes and then put it together. And then if you pick three or four that you like and then you realize I want to add one more to this to make it sort of a real person, grab a post-it. So just as a fun exercise, only in your cluster, get a pen and just sort of, you know, kind of circle it and then put a name, just make something up. Put a name next to that person and then add a few details that really customizes it to Portland. You might say, because like, for example, they live in a certain neighborhood.
That's your cluster.
So that would be another way to really customize the person. Or you might say, they go to a certain school.
Yeah, these are parents, right?
These are parents, yeah. You might add what it feels like to experience, what their experience is as a parent in the school that their child goes to. Maybe you'll add some of that dimension to your story. Just write that in pen on the, basically the white paper that's behind it. Actually, we'll cluster the person together. You can write the school, yeah. Say, I'm going to bring more tape. Those post-its are not.
There's plenty up here for you to do.
I missed the instruction.
No, she's going to disrupt ours.
And if you want to steal an idea from somebody else, just grab another post-it and write it down. So name the person and then just write a few notes around him to just give us a sense for her or they. Anybody else need tape to help their CV stay together? Oh. I will eventually want to read them together, but most importantly that they stay together. I think. I think we'll pause there. Director Moore, would you be opposed to ending a little bit early on this section? But thank you all because I think my main goal was to really get some realness to the personas and I'll definitely be able to mine a lot of these and be able to work those out. So appreciate it. So thank you. Okay. So, next item is short-term health and safety plan.
So I want to thank the board and I for giving us a chance to talk to them about the short-term plans that were recently published. Want to make you aware, I prepare to provide the board with about a one to two-minute summary of each plan. But in light of the 30-minute time limit, would it be better we just ask questions? The board has questions, or would you rather have the quick summaries of each plan?
So operative word being quick.
One to two minutes? Okay, so there's likely to be a lot of questions. So I've invited the specialists that are working on these plans. I want to give them credit because it's been a lot of work going into this work. So over here is Neil Shirley.
Sherline.
Sherline, working on fire alarm sprinklers and also working on roofs. Erin Lee is actually working on three different ones, water, asbestos, and lead paint. Just kind of waiting here. Lisa Fagan is working on the security plan. Alan Park is working on the security plan. And Paul sitting back there working on ADA. So I want to give them credit and recognition here with the board. So let's go through the plans. I'm going to go through the plans in order you have them. And you'll pack it there and briefly kind of give you the high-level aspects of each of those plans. Accessibility first. There were accessibility, there were ADA assessments performed in 2009 and later in 2012, 13. We do have an ADA plan which created in 1994. There's going to be an effort to ask the board to help us with deciding priorities on creating a new plan in the near future. And we're also going to be completing the facilities condition assessment in the future. Don't know about the timing there. They want to ask that question of the specialists. Early projects on accessibility have been Fernwood, Lewis, and King. There's also been three middle school conversion projects that have been worked on. Planning on completing virtually all the early projects and also the middle school projects by the fall of 2019. Okay, any questions about accessibility?
So we have a, John, we have a transition plan now, but it has to be updated.
1994.
And then what's in the transition plan? Can you just describe it in lay terms?
So the transition plan is really an identification of those deficiencies in our buildings that don't meet current ADA requirements. So a transition plan, most public agencies work through that. It's identification of what those are and a schedule by which those will be remedied or brought into compliance. So 1994 version that we have was not adopted by the board. So we're going to pull together a plan that could be adopted by the board and then update the information that's identifying what those deficiencies are through the facility condition assessment, which will be taking a look at the condition of our facilities. The last time that was done is about 2012. We've done some work since then, so what's the current state of that?
And the timeline for the update?
So I would like to at some point come to the board. There's some priority setting that needs to happen around investments in ADA. That list that would be in the transition plan, what are the priorities around that? Have that discussion with the board so we can kind of take that, implement that in a transition plan. And then that would be a dynamic document that would come back and look at what's the list of what needs to be done? What are the funding priorities and the funding sources that go into that? So I've talked with Dr. Burnham about coming back to the board at some point and having that conversation. And the board's pleasure is on that. I'm happy to look at Dr. Burnham and the board to have that discussion.
Yeah, what timeline are you looking for?
To have that conversation, I mean, we could do that, yeah, this fall. That would be.
So just some historical context. When the bond was referred, there was a long conversation about our ADA non-compliance and just the pace with which we were getting compliance. And so that's why in the, when it looked like there was going to be just another bond go out with incremental progress being made on ADA compliance, but not as part of a sort of cohesive plan with an end in sight, was that there was a requirement that the district come up with a long-range strategy on health, safety, and accessibility. But part of the conversation in the committee, the fund advisory committee and then at the board level was that there would be this plan that would show our community how we're going to get compliance with federal law that's been in existence for two decades. And so for a variety of reasons, primarily the change in staff. We did a report in December of last year and now we're going to facilities report. So I guess what I'm wondering is, how does that transition plan dovetail with this other requirement that was part of the bond package that I referred to the others?
I would see the transition plan as being that long-term plan. It identifies what the deficiencies are. The funding, the schedule, the schedule is going to be based on the funding. The funding you put into something, the quicker you accomplish or remedy those deficiencies. So its priority is how do we, where do we invest that first? Is it whole building accessibility? Is it incremental as we're doing other projects and so forth? So we can bring those recommendations forth. But I would see the transition plan as that statement of intent by the district of what is going to be completed and an estimate of by when.
So we don't currently have an inventory of what we need to do on the accessibility in order to make our buildings ADA compliant? in order to make our buildings ADA compliant?
The last assessment we have of that is 2012. So, that is a little outdated and it's difficult to extrapolate costs that far back and then try to determine a schedule. So, the part of the reason for including an ADA assessment and the facility condition assessment is to, what's the current state of that? And what's the current cost estimate for that? And that will help derive the schedule for what needs to be done. So, we can run through our scenarios presuming bond funding or with just general funding of those and look at how quickly we can get that done. That is one of the biggest drivers to that schedule. So, the current assessment is out of date, you know, it's six years old.
Okay. So, if I understand you correctly, the facilities condition assessment is going to include an assessment of the ADA deficiencies, right?
An update.
It's going to be an update to the 2012 information.
Okay. And when are we expecting that?
That's probably middle of next year. At the earliest, there's four components to the facility condition assessment, and that is one of them. And it's a conversation with our consultants right now, how we identify costs. A lot of ADA deficiencies, some of them are door handles, some of them might be projects, how do you assess that cost for a RAM or something else?
Okay. I'm trying to figure out how we're going to sequence this. So, when you say the middle of next year, what does that mean? Does that mean next June? Does that mean middle of next school year?
Middle of next summer.
Next summer?
Yeah.
Okay. So, by the time you complete that, let me do it another way. Do we have to set the priorities in order to complete the facilities assessment with cost estimates?
No.
Okay. So, when does priority setting have to happen? Like, when is it logical that that would be happening? Before the assessment, after the assessment, during the assessment?
I'd say we can do that now. And again, the assessment is to, how do we want to invest? Do we want to do update full buildings? Do we want to continue like we are now, trying to gain efficiencies in doing those repairs? Do we have contractors at other schools doing roof repair or other things? I mean, there's a certain amount of efficiency in doing it that way. Doesn't necessarily guarantee that when we're done with that building that we've remedied all the deficiencies in that building. So, do we want to continue that way? Do we want to look at bringing buildings fully into compliance? There's also, there are decisions that we could discuss and make.
Okay. But, I mean, I could set a priority. I mean, absence any information on how much anything is going to cost. Well, by God, I think all of our buildings ought to be ADA compliant by next August. But I'm guessing that's not a reasonable thing. So, I mean, I'm a little puzzled how we're going to be able to set priorities if it's not informed by how much it's actually going to cost.
Part of that priority setting is getting to the schedule. So, if we say buildings are going to be fully accessible, we will, that's a different set of buildings than just where there might be major roof work being done and we just have the contractor do that accessibility. So, it really gets to the schedule of, or I guess the sequence. And the priority comes by, how quickly do we want to do that? That kind of sets the schedule. So, the sequence is, what do we want to have done first? And the schedule comes in by determining how much funding do we think we could put towards this?
So, we hear on the transition plan update, it has.
Here we are again, folks. No, 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 I'm just saying, we're at a meeting where there's no protocol announced about who's going to go in what order. Same thing as last night. So, can we announce at every meeting that we have a protocol to put in? Go ahead, Sherlin.
Go ahead.
No, 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 it's really okay. It's, go ahead.
So, you have here the draft transition plan update will propose an emphasis on making one elementary, middle, and high school, and each high school will be fully accessible. It seems like somewhat of a prioritization. How far are we from having that actually, or do we know? I mean, do we have like half the high school clusters have?
All the modernized buildings currently meet code.
But that wouldn't be the elementary and the middle?
Right. Well, with an exception or two. So, yes, I've worked up some scenarios, kind of what it would take to bring each high school cluster up to that level.
But is that like sort of the first, I mean, stated here as sort of a priority, so is that how it will come to us? It's like, if you want to get each high school cluster, here's the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school that we would propose, even if it's out of sequence with the schedule. Is that how we're going to get it? So that we.
That could be one way of proposing that to you, and that's recommendation. I'm hearing that from our physical therapists, occupational therapists, and others as far as a priority for families to kind of make neighborhoods accessible. That is one priority. We could look at others. But I think that would be a version of a recommendation I bring forward for consideration. So, and within that, we could talk about what would be the appropriate schools within each cluster.
So, let me take, I'm just having this, far the prioritization might be, I mean, there's different things we need to address. If we can't, if there's no wheelchair access to second floor of a building, that's something we might prioritize over cabinet handles or drinking fountain. You know, getting a drinking fountain to work or something like that. So, that's one level of prioritization. And then similar as to, we did the sequencing with the asbestos and lead abatement. We combined some jobs, even though they weren't quite in order because it made sense to, it was less expensive to do it that way. That might be another way that the job order comes out.
Yeah, those are potential approaches to that, yes.
And I have another question.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Okay. Do we have a sense of, in terms of this kind of work, when we roll around to the next bond? You know, there's probably more, always more roof work to do. Maybe not so much the water, lead abatement, radon stuff, probably a little bit, but not nearly as much. So, there might be relatively more room for ADA on the next bonds. And I'm just going to throw that out as, seeing some nodding heads. So, that might be one area that we immediately are able to. Three programs are district-wide: water, paint, and radon. That's what you're saying. Yeah, yeah. Hopefully, much of that work will be done. There's probably always going to be. There's still. But not the kind of volume that we have. Okay, so we get, and then we'll get the EFC, the assessment, and then we can start thinking about, what do we want to prioritize, you know? In terms of actual dollar amount, can school work make sense?
Yeah. The prioritization would be just, we can set up a sequence for future work. And then the schedule would be based on funding we can put towards that. What would it look like if it's just out of the general fund? If we resume bond funding? That kind of thing.
And then the other piece is, what might we defer if a building is coming up sooner rather than later for complete modernization?
Exactly.
Okay. That's all.
Well, no, I'm just trying to figure out that how we move ahead. We have been waiting a long time and we have to do something, obviously. So, what kind of timeline? When can, I guess, we can schedule a work session? Is that a sequence of this to prioritize how we're going to look at which buildings get done? And I have a thought of what, what I would recommend, you know, looking at children with significant disabilities, maybe by clusters. Anyway, we have been waiting a long time, so how do we kind of fast-track this to make some decisions? Can I, like, we're going to have to prioritize how we prioritize this. So, is there a deadline for something?
No current deadline, but just, you know, sooner that we can do this, the better. And this will inform, you know, the planning and design of future work as well.
Okay.
So, it seems like that kind of, a work session on what are these types of things we're looking at?
And priorities.
And how they obstruct children's learning might be a good start for us. And that will give us a sense of, wow, what's really important to take on, just in terms of how it impacts kids. Of course, it all impacts kids, but what are the larger impacts? And that would at least give us that framework for then when we get the assessment and then, you know, we give you some guidance as to your, what we think are the most important pieces to go first. And then you have to figure out, well, what's the timing with our long-term facilities updating bond program and all the other stuff might be the way to go?
Well, I think it's really subjective and we would be informed by the community if it's impacted. So, I'd like to see not just a work session, but some discussion with the community during the bond stakeholder advisory group. This was a big issue because we're out of compliance because it's more than two decades. It's like three or four decades. And so, I'm interested in creating an opportunity for us to go back to the community if they were input especially on this. Because there's so many different ways we could slice and dice it. And it's going to have a big impact on what we ask for, how much money we want. I mean, we're only putting, and I mean only, $10 million to this in the current bond, which is like a drop in the bucket, so.
Can I make a suggestion? We've got work sessions pretty well planned out for the rest of the fall, I think, at this point. So, we're probably looking, probably looking January, after January. So, why don't we, ten more twenty seconds. So, we'll work on figuring out time.
Okay.
And then we'll.
I just want to emphasize that ADA work is going on listed several schools. It's happening there. All the modernization buildings are being brought up to code. So, work is being done. It's just a longer-term plan that we're talking about. And the transition plan that needs to be completed is kind of that communication piece of where we're going as well.
So, I guess, I mean, we'll have more conversations about this, I'm sure. But I'm guessing in order for it to be a productive discussion, it'll be helpful to have, I mean, if you want some priority setting, it would be helpful if you could sort of frame up what the options are.
Sure.
I also think it's important for us to consider who our students are now, kind of the ages and grades, and any with, you know, wheelchair-bound, just really thinking about what are the short-term needs for some of the students we have? And is there a way that we can get some buildings ready for who we have now?
I guess one thing, just from a process standpoint, so I'm just looking at the, you know, plan update and it says, you know, the plan was developed in 1994, but the board never adopted the plan, which is sort of like, well, so would it ever get brought to the board? Like, I don't think, I would ask staff to be proactive to come if something needs to be lessed or resourced, that it be brought to the board. Because having a sort of a 20-year-old artifact of, well, the board never adopted it, is that why it didn't go, move ahead? So, I would hate to have, a year from now, a statement like that still in there. So, if we need to have a transition plan and we need to have it adopted by the board, then please bring it to us so we can have a discussion and staff has clear guidance. But it shouldn't be that we, for lack of some sort of board action, that we are where we are with our ADA transition hopefully going forward.
In the interest of time, can we move on? Thank you.
Can I just have one quick question? Do you have a sense of like the 10 most egregious things that need to be fixed? Based on input from staff on the ground?
The input I get from staff is, they want to be able to tell families, we can accommodate your family's need in your neighborhood school. Hence, the reason for the high school, middle, and elementary. That's their, we can accommodate all students, but, you know, occasionally we have to send them beyond their neighborhood school. And that's not a fun conversation to have. So, that's what I hear from BPS staff, is let's make our neighborhood schools, at least one at every grade level, accessible.
So, this represents the first of eight short-term plans that staff is updating the board with tonight. And all of these, you can, you know, it's the same questions. You know, a lot of it hinges on the facilities assessment. That inventory is going to give staff an opportunity to develop some suggested paths forward, some recommendations, and bring back some options for the board around how you want to weight priorities so that you, we end up with a queue of schools and specific projects that, you know, we want to prioritize. So, I know that's the work that will need to happen. So, shall we move on to asbestos?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to give us the punchline and then see if there's, everybody has the report in front of them?
Let's go on to asbestos. So, there's 12 being allocated to that to bond. I think the board aware there are biannual internal inspections going on in asbestos every year. And also, there's a three-year inspection that's done by consultants. It's very thorough. And so, we have a lot of information on asbestos in our schools. Right now, the short-term plan has asbestos program broken into two phases. The first one, they finished four schools, large-scale asbestos projects this summer. And phase two is going to be six schools. Those are under design right now for the summer of 2019. Priority setting in these schools is based on hazard level, what was the damage to asbestos, and also how accessible, accessible that asbestos might be. And that database I mentioned, it does have that information. The goal is going to be six to 12 large-scale projects this summer. Questions? So, just to make sure, are students exposed to any of these? Are these all sort of bottled up? And we're going to go in when students aren't there and remove all? You'd be full containment, all that, and there and.
Yeah, the most hazardous areas have been isolated and sealed off a long time ago. Crawl spaces, means that only short-term workers go into, need dress for readers and type X suits to even enter. So, but those have been, like other things, sitting here with the district for 10 or 20 years, awaiting funding. It would be a quick picture. Others is still safe, but like accessible piping that you can still see in hallways and classrooms, corridors. But we're planning the majority of all that work to be done after hours during the summer after building closure.
I guess just wondering, in all those specific areas, like you were saying, like exterior pipes and everything, like, I'm assuming admin and, you know, staff are, like in each school, are duly aware of where those specific, like harsh areas are located?
Yeah, and each building has. Yeah, and each building has, Dr. Burner was talking about, these assessments are done, there's asbestos management plan in the office of every building. It has a lot of this information in it. It has those six-month, three-year assessments in them, so.
And labeling is required, and the reason for the six-month internal inspections is looking for labels falling off, deterioration, damage from someone working near the ad and damaging it. So that's why it's an ongoing, ever-ending assessment inspection.
There been any surprises as you can talk through this?
Yeah. I mean, when you're, that's a lot of assessment going on. So staying, we're thinking about asbestos pretty well.
There are a lot of concerns with dealing with any hazardous material if just the public or teachers and staff that don't understand the process. And we really try and communicate how we do it, how we test, you know. Even though the principals know or the staff know that it's happening in their school over summer, they won't be there, we still like to fully inform them how it's done and the testing's available and what the results.
Are there like fact sheets that are at the office or on bulletin boards so parents or community numbers can access or information about?
In the schools that we've been working in, we've sent those out to principals, but we're working with communications department to really ramp that up this year and create kind of a fax and just the entire process. Because there's a few schools this year where everything was done by the regulations, even above board, but a lot of unknowns caused a lot of worry and additional concern. So we're gonna be developing a lot more robust information to post online just for how we do any type of project with asbestos or lead or.
I want to ask a very specific circumstance here, but I know it's emblematic of others through the district, and it's Hosford. Now, at Hosford, the floor underneath the stage was never finished. It's just buried dirt. The dirt's contaminated with asbestos. That's been assessed and known for many years. There's a whole train wreck of problems that happened for Hosford because there's asbestos in that dirt. They can't drill through the floor of the stage, they can't repair the stage, they can't get electric onto the stage, on and on and on. When we get to Hosford, what are you gonna be able to do for that? Is it gonna be concreted over and we're good? Or is it gonna be some kind of jury fix?
No, Hosford is on our radar. I believe it's one of the ones.
Oh, yeah. It's on your list. I saw.
Fifteen that we're assessing. By the end of this year, we'll have a full survey and assessment of condition there. But it's a, those are known areas, those are some of our high priorities. Our plan is to actually go into all those crawl spaces and not just repair, fix, so it can be damaged again, but to completely remove all the asbestos on piping, out of the soil, excavate some of the contaminated soil, go back, re-insulate everything, and make it so any worker or maintenance can go in there and not have any hazards to deal with.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Okay, last question.
Yeah. Fernwood's have a, Fernwood building is having a ton of stuff, new roof and all sorts of chaos. And then I see it's on the list for a couple of years from now. Is there some reason that work wasn't synchronized? The building's gonna be disrupted and it's been fairly disrupted in these the first couple of weeks.
Yeah, but Fernwood was just done, but by the time we started and had gotten all this, this short-term plan put together and all the buildings targeted, it was already a lot farther along. Also, some of the work that could be done there, if there, there's times when it works and times where it doesn't. So if like Chapman, Chapman this next summer is gonna get a roof done, so it's a great time to do the crawl space. They're not competing with each other. But when you're doing a lot of interior work, like fire sprinklers, fire alarms, where you have to get through the building, and we're trying to do all the flooring abatement, then it's not causing a secondary, not gaining anything.
One, just one quick thing. I might be catching up, but there's, I just noticed there's no, like major, there's no high schools on the phase lists. Is that, have they already been assessed and dealt with? Or is the focus on elementary schools and?
You know, the focus is all based on the database. It's all based on hazard and hazard damage and the condition. So we're not targeting, you know, that's how we're viewing asbestos and lead paint. It's all based on the hazard and hazard to staff, hazard to workers, hazard to community. And so that's why, not saying that we might not get to one of them, but these, the first several on the list are all based on that information that we have in the database.
I might point out to that question that firstly, all eight of these programs are built around risk and are in hazard.
It's like code red, these are like major code red.
They have different risk assessments, different hazards, but that's the whole priority here is to reduce the risk.
Right.
Anyone else?
Okay. Fire alarms, fire clips?
Fire alarms. So the board may be aware of this, Rick, probably heard about it, but there's an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Portland, Fire Department, that involves the fire alarm systems for 76 schools. And that agreement goes back to 16. The deadline for that agreement is December 2, 2020. A lot of schools involved. Maintenance has been working on it already, and the bond has recently morphed into doing 30 of those schools. There have been sprinkler work, that's far along now, only. There has been sprinkler work in Fernwood and Lewis, and there's some sprinkler work planned for Jefferson. The plan right now for the bond money is that 27 schools will be completed by that 20, that December 2020 deadline. That's exclusive for far alarm work only. Questions?
Generally about the fire? You mean generally, if you have questions, there's no other?
Well, the focus is obviously moving now to the IGA and that great tight deadline.
So is that a minimum compliance agreement? Or is it best practice?
That is an expectation with a signed document, signed by the Fire Department and signed by us.
Right.
It's a pretty stout expectation.
But is the standard sort of the minimum level of compliance? Or is it a higher level? Do you know what that IGA is?
It's just, the compliance with IGA is based on, it's based on the code.
Okay. So we're basically out of compliance?
Yeah, and this plan that was put together several years ago was designed to, I guess, in compliance.
Okay. Any other questions?
So sprinklers and another full body of work that we should be planning on doing once the alarms are in or how.
For the longer-term plan, we should have longer sprinklers, but it'll be on a case-by-case basis, depending on the building and the assessment by the community.
So that it's not an expectation that every building would have sprinklers, every floor?
Is that a code compliance issue or?
No. I think our system were designed to protect buildings. Firearms are designed to protect people. That's the distinction this may. Get people out of buildings and protect the building with sprinkler system. So they are, we are setting a priority on people. Teachers.
Yes. Good thing.
As I mentioned, it's all based on risk.
Right.
Do our new schools, are they fully sprinkled?
Yeah, they have to be up to the newest code. Whatever the city Fire Marshal chooses is their code, new different codes. That's the requirement for those schools.
So the full modernization that we're pointing towards over the next, however, maybe years?
Have no choice, estimate.
Okay.
Okay, lead paint.
Lead paint. So that is one of the three district-wide programs, about $16.6 million involved there. PBS consultants did an assessment back, they finished it in 17. They identified 10,000 different locations of deteriorated paint that were visibly We've recently broken that into four different phases, and I want to give credit to the people who did that, Chris Voice did this, Darren, I really appreciate what they did and how they did it. It's all based on risk. The phases are, the four phases are, the first phase and the top priority is pre-K through second grade. That's really great risk is here for the kids and interior where it's assessable below five feet. So if it's higher, it's not as high a priority. Phase two is pre-K through second exterior and where there's evidence of paint chips and things like that. Phase three is the third grade through 12th interior, and phase four is what's remaining on the exterior of our buildings. And the last point is the plan is to complete all of phase one in the highest priority, the highest risk by the end of the school year 18, 19. That's 60 different schools. Some of those will be brought, come back to for those other phases, though. Be aware of that. Setting priorities on when the kids are, will not get exposed. Questions?
Is this internal work or are we hiring contractors?
It's internal currently with one team. Five, six?
Five.
Yes.
But the board just approved the finding of fact, we're doing the IDIQ to get about four or five lead paint contractors under master contracts. That's, should be done by the end of the year, very early next year, so we're really gonna be ramping up.
So we're keeping the internal?
Keeping the in-house crew.
And we're adding in addition?
Yep.
And I want to make something really clear here to the board. We're not painting the entire interior of a school. We're not doing it. If paint's in great shape, it's not being painted. We can't do it. We don't have the money or the time. By the time we finish, we'll have deteriorating paint again.
Right.
Yeah, so I think this is where the long-term stuff comes in, because we got to where we are today because we didn't paint. So, I mean, I think this is good. I do worry, I mean, how long, how long will all these four phases take? You know what I mean? Like?
Couple of years.
Couple of years.
For all four phases?
Okay, it's not bad.
They're getting some real good ideas about that timing now, because they have, they've been doing it now for several months.
We need to get into a cycle where we're painting just because we need to paint, not because, oh my God, we're gonna kill somebody, you know?
Yeah, it was my understanding the district years ago had about 20 painters, and then 10, and then five.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then two, three.
Well, I, it was, was it two?
That was improvements in efficiency. We had one painter.
During the summer of 2016?
We were down to about two or three.
When Courtney Lobo was here? And they did more painting in two months than they've done in 20 years.
Yep.
Yeah, we don't want to be there again.
Therefore, every Saturday in the morning, we'll show up at the.
Well, you know? It's not a bad idea.
I will confess to be part of a crew that went in on a Saturday in the school.
I mean, I don't think civilians ought to be working with friable lead paint, but, you know, if it's in decent shape and you just.
We won't ask our unions about that. It would be much better to have it done professionally.
Yeah, as well, but, you know, okay. Ray Don?
Another one of the three district-wide health and safety programs. This is well along. Testing actually began in 2016 during the heating season in the school year. So far, there have been 20 permanent mitigation systems installed in 16 schools. So that gives you an idea, that's almost the entire district, by the way, that's covering most, almost the entire district, only a few schools left. So we're doing pretty well there. And this year, this school year, during the heating season, they're testing seven remaining schools to see what we need to do there. There's gonna be a requirement to retest every five years from the state coming out in January. And that's for the schools that have mitigation systems, so that's 20, 22, whatever it is. We've got to test those, retest those schools every five years. If there are no mitigation systems at all from our past testing, we retest every 10 years. Okay? Questions about Ray Don?
So we're doing this just crazy stuff that could pop up anytime, eventually.
It depends upon a lot of variables. The barometric pressure's a factor. Crack in a foundation's a factor. The ventilation change in the school, instead of being pressurized a little bit, maybe a room is all of a sudden negative because of an HVAC issue, then you've got a change on your hands. That's the reason for the retesting. Plus, there's a cutoff of four equal curies per liter. So if you tested one room and three this year, maybe, you know, maybe it's gonna be four, five, six, five years from now. So this is so many variables, that's why you have to be fast. And that's just a matter of knowledge from past testing throughout the country. Anyone else? This was the first short-term plan that we looked at by board members. The HSA committee looked at this back early last summer. And there was an assessment done in 2009, and then again in 2012, updated roofs, $51 million in the bond for this. 23 schools have been repaired or replaced, the roofs have been repaired or replaced since 2013. That's, excuse me, 2013 to 2017. In 2018, roofs were replaced in Fernwood, King and Upton. Planning right now is to replace four schools per year.
And at that rate, how long will it take to replace all the rooms that are?
If you look at the table on the roofing, there's a lot of schools, and it's definitely deteriorating. Someone want to take a stab at that, questions?
We noticed you stopped.
For a year, that's 25 years. So this is a perpetual.
Yeah, it's like the painting the Golden Gate. I wasn't gonna say it, but. Because 25 years is about the life.
So it says, for example, Aster was recently done before 2013, recently.
Is your question?
Yeah, just, never mind, it's okay. It's just my mind.
My recent is recent. Okay. So is it, is it a reasonable bet that all of the roofs are at their, how many of these are?
Cameras on.
Yeah, okay. So you've come up with these phases based on the condition of the current.
Based on the assessment.
We're a couple of these not done because we couldn't, we didn't get it bad.
We had one.
Rigler. And this is going to change, I mean, there's reassessments all the time by our maintenance people and so they realize, hey, we didn't notice this during our assessment, our consulting assessments.
And if the facility conditions assessment, you'll update that.
Okay, security?
Security, five million in bond. There was an assessment recently, several months ago, of thirteen schools, four elementary, three K through eight, four middle schools and two high schools. The names of those schools are in the report there if you wish. Focus was on access control, emergency announcements in common areas, signage and fencing in that assessment. The prioritizes, the schools are prioritized based on eight criteria that are all laid out in the short-term plan and risk rankings were assigned to each school. That's also discussed in the, in the short-term plan and there's a ranking table in there. And there were five different groups been created from the four cohorts that we are aware of, the schools. Our thinking currently is we might be able to get five crews working at the same time on each of the groups of schools to accelerate this process.
So when I went to Rigler last year, they were having continued vandalism of portables. Get a security camera or something out there.
Portables?
Yeah.
So cameras are not in the scope of work that was developed as part of the assessment by the consultant? So we're not planning on adding cameras except for those that'll be in video intervals for access control?
But an individual camera, something like that would be something that would go as a project development request to the facilities department?
We could add it.
So it may have been just, it was like two, you know, a couple of times within the period of a month. And you have to manage those and that stuff.
It's out of this scope, but we could talk about it other time.
Yeah, okay. And I don't know if it's, I don't know if the problem went away or.
So we had a discussion at the cabinet level this morning around specific requests that may be problem areas where an exterior camera would be helpful, for instance?
So we've got a series of sort of parent contacts about things that we've wanted, because that moved up the?
I've got the same, I've got the same email and we're still looking over high schools and the assessment of the high schools.
I'm sorry, can you?
We're still looking at the assessment of the high schools to see where we can, or what we can do with these schools. We've got so many doors in a high school within the scope that we currently have. Locking down the front door doesn't help with the hundred other doors that are in the school. So we're basically going to have to look at school by school when it comes to the high schools. We have exactly what we can do and it may broaden the scope of what we need to do under the, under the bond.
I mean, just thinking about?
This was with the portables too, right?
Well, the portables, but also it's just, there's all different doors.
It's hard to get around that school. I mean, it's basically, we have to go outside in order to get to certain portions of that school. The gym is hard to get to.
So a concern I would have is, okay, it's obviously, it's not, obviously not on the?
There's a lot of corners in that.
It's not on the schedule to be modernized anytime soon.
No, it's not.
So, so we have at least probably, you know, an eight to ten-year facility that's?
Teresa and I were actually going over that school today and we have some recommendations that we can bring forward later. But there's more work than just what's in our scope of work under the bond to do. Right, so whether it's parent alerts us to a situation, students, principals, you know, we've been talking around, what does it look like to have sort of a panel prioritization process? Because there's way more requests coming in than we have capacity here. You know, set aside resources to take on annual projects and sometimes they're small, sometimes they involve some, some planning. So that's something we're aware of because we do hear these things coming into our inboxes or our phones. And we want to be responsive, either here it's where it's on the queue or here's where we're considering that request or here's how we're going to prioritize it or not. And we're really trying to keep the, the schools or the PTAs from going outside of the PBS standards are so that, you know, we don't have different systems in different schools. You know, schools buy in-NES cams instead of what we have, we can't, we can't control those.
Yeah, we can't.
Okay. It's, it's after eight, so I want to leave enough time so we can talk about Benson. So the last item is water quality?
Yes. Real quickly, assessment in 2017 was presented to the board by CH2HML on fixture replacement plan on two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven fixtures, drinking fixtures and kitchen fixtures. Schools replaced in seven groups late last year. Prioritization has been based on phase one, common areas only. And then phase two is classrooms, both of those are in action right now. And we recently published a spreadsheet that specifies the circumstances for all those fixtures for each school, it's available now.
This has probably gotten the most press of all of them, so. I don't think we need to belabor this, but anybody has questions?
I want to thank the board though, because I know the board inherited this issue, not the bond, what the health and safety issue confined with. I appreciate all the great questions, you honestly are paying close attention to this. I want to reemphasize that this is a unique opportunity because I've given interviews to a number of locations, including outside of Portland area. And from what I can tell, we're the only district in the whole country that has a health and safety bond that covers way beyond water. That is eight different health and safety issues, we need to use this as a springboard, and you already know that. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it's worth noting, we have a legislative session coming up. Where some funding from the state for all of these facility issues would, would be welcome, the same. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The dispatchers are taking control of the mouse, health council will retain the segments. There's no results yet.
Okay. Okay. Oh, you're still here?
I'm still here, I went anywhere.
Okay.
That irrelevant. Oh, alright.
Was sixty-two thirty-six. Sixty-two to thirty-six percent.
My last question is.
Okay, one million votes cast, we're on big, one oh three and one oh four. A million votes is? No, it's, I mean, with a million cast, it's fifty-nine forty. And then, and that's on. And then it's sixty-seven thirty-two. Oh, and one oh five's looking really good.
I have a good feeling about the Allen measures.
Well, we're a lot of money.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that, so that one, sorry. That one is up.
Yeah, the clean energy is sixty-three percent.
One oh five is sixty-four percent and thirty-five. That's a pretty big.
Cleaner.
Okay.
So good evening, board, we're back again today to talk on the Benson campus. Tonight's focus is on the master plan, which is focused on how the facility will meet ed specs or facility specs, which are really about how can it host the programming on this campus that we envision in perpetuity. One question I will put out there is, we had a programmatic conversation last week in work session. And so while we're building a flexible, modern school, which I think you're going to hear how it's modular and it's designed, I think a lot of the crowd that's here this evening was very interested in how the programs that have been in the immediate past, sort of, co-located in many cases on this campus, what, what that looks like in the future. We received an initial staff recommendation based on what we know to be the case today. But we also had a chance to hear from the leaders of each of those programs last week around, in response to the question of, well, what would an ideal facility look like to support the programming and the students?
Do you want to give much of our update, sorry?
Yes.
Well, I am curious to know that, but now you made a sentence.
Fifty-three forty-two. Well, that's the first. Fifty-three forty-two.
Fifty-three forty-two, Brown, so far. It's not final.
So it would be helpful to continue to hear the board's question of how to best accommodate all of our students, all of our students. And so it's helpful for the staff to hear if there's a direction from consensus of the board around what full continuum of options we should be considering to make sure we best meet the law students. So I'll just say that right now and stop there because we're going to get into a conversation around the facility. But this is a big topic and we want to get it right. And I would invite us to engage all of the school communities and programs, students and families that are currently hosted on the Benson campus. I imagine they have some thoughts themselves around what would be a more ideal situation for all parties. And last week, you asked a number of questions, which staff has been diligent about developing initial response to, which I'll let our deputy respond to.
So it was probably about an hour or when you were driving to come to the meeting, we got some information out to you. There were like six to eight key questions you had. We provided for most of it, except for the question around the piece of program, we'll have follow-up information on that. Please let me know via email or telephone, whatever works for you, what other questions you still have, what you're wondering. The sooner we get your questions and we'll definitely be listening tonight. And I know one of the things we're kind of thinking we'll need to do is after this conversation and hearing questions and what comes out from you is probably want to schedule another work session where we're going to kind of put the two conversations together about programmatic and, you know, the building. But today we get to like dream with the team that has been putting together this information about the building specifically. And we just want you to know that we'll all be working collaboratively based on what we kind of hear from you in order to prepare that we keep moving forward.
Okay, I think that's a great intro. I think I'll let the, the team introduce themselves, then there's, obviously you have a lot of information in your packets, so I think we'll just jump into that information right away. As discussed, the focus tonight's talk about the Benson ed spec and the Benson master plan and how that has been developed over time. So the team is going to walk through that. One thing that we're also going to talk about a little bit is a month or so ago, we got updated cost information that came in. That information is coming higher than previous estimates. So we've started the process of how we will bring those estimates, our costs, back into alignment with the budget. Still more work there, so you'll see kind of where we are at the moment, but we've got still some more to work to do on that. So with that, I will let the team introduce themselves.
My name is Jen Soam and I'm with the Office of School Modernization. And I have Lauren and Joe from Basetti Architects with me tonight, as well as Kylie and Glenn, who are our design advisory group co-chairs. So, yeah. So we'll start with a little bit of project background. Our target for student capacity is seventeen hundred for the Benson Polytechnic School. And we're at three hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet. That is the largest of Portland Public Schools' high school with about a hundred thousand square feet of CTE chop space. Benson Tech has a number of challenges, among them being a Portland historic landmark building. And so what this means is we will be required to go before the Portland Landmarks Commission. We've already visited them twice to give them updates on the project over the last two and a half years. So we have established a relationship with them and we look forward to returning in the next year. We have some significant health and safety updates, many related to what you just heard about. Benson has significant ADA issues, especially with the front door being inaccessible, as well as some classrooms in the building requiring more elevators. It's also contains unreinforced masonry, it's a URM building, so it's a high seismic priority, as well as the building envelope needs attention, particularly the roof. There's a number of work orders that, and, and, that maintenance is dealing with on a regular basis. So this illustrates the campus and how it's evolved over the last one hundred and one years. So starting in nineteen seventeen, the front iconic buildings that you see, those were constructed in nineteen sixteen and nineteen seventeen and those are the most historically significant. And then you can see, this, this shows just the evolution from nineteen seventeen up until nineteen ninety-two and with a number of additions over the years, also a varying historical significance amongst all of the additions. The proposed master plan retains the historic, the highest historically significant buildings and those are shown in the diagram with the new construction shown in blue and yellow. And so you can see, just, this is the proposed master plan with the existing structures shown in the kind of paint color.
First off, hello, superintendent and board members, thank you for having us, so really excited to be here. So on this, I also want to point out that through a lot of input with our stakeholder groups, we refined the master plan to be able to retain more of the existing structures along the street frontage and at the front and back of the building. So I think that's been an important aspect of the master plan as it's evolved over time. As Jen pointed out, universal design is a key component of this project. We have the front door, obviously, but the large stairs leading to it is not accessible at the moment. A number of other spaces that need to be addressed for accessibility. We also are looking at the master plan to address having special education spread out throughout the building so that it's not segregated into one area. If you look at those opportunities as well in the modernization to bring a more inclusive design into the, into the project. As your previous discussion went, health and safety obviously is a big part of the master, of the modernization project. And as Jen pointed out, the ADA and seismic upgrades are really big components of that. And we'll talk a little bit about that later as we talk about cost models and how we're looking at the cost of the project.
The guiding principles, essentially the, the key components that a lot of the decisions are made from, through the design group as well as the advisory group as the master plan evolves. These have been established since the master plan committee started. And again, like I mentioned, these are also being utilized with us as the design advisory group. Some of the key guiding principles are honoring the unique history and the culture that's been established here at Benson. Benson has an opportunity as well to create strong connections with education and industry leaders. Benson also needs to provide a hands-on, project-based learning environment, but also providing a facility that can be adaptable and flexible to change with educational, with educational needs. At the same time, providing learning environments that inspire creativity and collaboration. Also providing just the key comprehensive educational experience. also providing just the key comprehensive educational experience of a high school, and then as well as celebrating the diversity that we do have here in Portland, and something that can be unique to Benson, and then also positioning Benson to become a national model for STEAM and CTE.
So, our stakeholder engagement started almost three years ago, in January twenty sixteen. It started with the Master Planning Committee that was established at that time. They actually met for over two years, up until May of just this year, twenty eighteen, a total of sixteen meetings. We have also engaged with steering committee, a number of school stakeholders, district leadership. We have a steering committee, like all of the other modernization projects, to help us go through the design process.
And one of the unique aspects of Benson is we did a pretty extensive industry and partner outreach where we did tours, interviews with business leaders in the community that had either facilities or programs that might be relevant to Benson, so we could get input about trends in their industries and how we can be thoughtful about the ed spec and the design to respond to those trends. And it'll be an ongoing process as we look at, as we have the scheduler, we'll talk about how that will also influence the design going forward. I think student engagement is also something we wanted to key in on. We have Kylie here to help with that. Leading to that, we, last year, we did some student survey work. We actually have had interns in our office help do some facility artifact assessment of what key components were important to, from a student's perspective within the school, a number of outreach events such as lunch chats and other input, and then Kylie talking about something that you participated in.
Yeah, so my architecture class had the opportunity to go to Basetti Architects and work on, I guess you could say, with like the master plan, I guess. As we look at the two pictures on the right, the top one actually has me in a really close frame of line. We're actually like making a comment about what we'd like to see happen in the remodel and maybe what we'd like about the existing building. And my classes right below that were all, we were given a kind of like a building of the actual, like a drawing of the building, and we commented on what we really liked and what maybe we thought could be an improvement, and then we were given also a site plan, so we were able to talk about what we liked about the outside and maybe about how it's, what we liked to do like outside of the walls of Benson, but also like adjustments that are needed like based on the ADA accessibility and yeah, something like that.
And that's an activity-
I would love to hear what excited students most about this.
What excited us most? I think that-
Or maybe three things.
I think that because we're in the architecture major at Benson, we genuinely just have like an interest in it, and then to see something that's just so close, like that's our school. So, to see us actually have an input and to have it look like it's like just happening and coming true, it's just, it's like really amazing, and the fact that we were able to do it like on a field trip, and a lot of us are interested in going into architecture is why it's our major, and to just get a feel of the career as well was just an absolutely amazing experience. And I think overall, it was just a great way to learn more about actually an architecture firm and what you do and like how like perspectives from an individual can be so important, and when you come together and you see them, it can really, really change a project.
Was there a summary write-up of student input in terms of what?
Yes, there is. We have notes we've gotten. How many applications for the DAG?
We had twenty-five or twenty-six student applications for the Design Advisory Group. Yes. We had over seventy-five total, so about a third were students.
So, you'll see as we develop in the DAG notes, we're actually identifying, you know, student input within the DAG itself as well, because we have so many members, which is great, along with those outreach events. And we look to continue that, working with Kylie and other leadership to keeping this going and really getting all student voices heard as much as possible from all the programs and all the various-
If you did have a webpage or that you share with us, I would share with you.
And we have boards that they did post its on and all kinds of stuff, so yeah, it's very insightful. I'm just getting, looking broadly at schedule, we are, coming back, the intent was to come back in December to get an approval on the ed spec and master plan, which we're reviewing with you today. Leading up to this, we've been working pretty closely with OTL and staff to get input on the development of the ed spec. We've been working, again, as we talked with industry outreach and continue that as we continue forward into schematic design, with schematic design intended to launch in December, and that would also lead to bringing a contractor on board to help with other aspects of the project and getting further into design, leading to construction plan for twenty twenty-one. One other thing to note here is, the intent is to continue the engagement as we go through the process, to get good feedback from staff as we develop the plans, and then as we open the school to be able to make sure that we're addressing any of the questions, concerns, and thoughts that they have as we go through. So, looking again at the process, we're in the orange phase of this slide, the pre-design phase, that is the thing to wrap up at the end of this year. Before we were on board, there was an early master planning effort that led to two preferred schemes, and with those schemes, we were then engaged with our master plan committee to evaluate those, get more input, and respond with, we had about seven options that we explored with our master plan committee to get feedback on various scenarios, which led to the master plan, which we called Scheme L, that we landed on when you last saw the project for the bond, and that is on the lower left-hand corner. Since that time, we continued with more user group input, we started our steering committee meetings, and we had a draft ed spec that was developed, really taking into account the school as it is today, expanding to seventeen hundred students. What we're going to talk about today is how with that input, we've made some updates to that ed spec and master plan to respond to some of that feedback we received. And that's the, basically the phase we're in now, which we're calling programming. With our steering committee engaging with us, we were able to get good input to influence the ed spec, and we've also got our DAG now starting as well. So, with those stakeholders engaged, we are getting a lot of really good feedback. So, I want to touch briefly on the ed spec, and what it essentially is trying to do is define the facilities, how the facilities will support the programs at Benson. We're not here to define how that curriculum is delivered, we're here how the facilities support that. And because we have a comprehensive ed spec for comprehensive high schools, we use that as a reference point, but we need a site-specific ed spec for Benson because of the unique nature of the programs, CTE and FOC's option. So, what we had previously is both the comprehensive ed spec and a draft ed spec that was done in July of last year, and what we've taken is the input from the steering committee to revise and update that ed spec to respond to the results we received, and that's the document that you have in front of you today. The input that we received was looking to utilize space more efficiently and effectively because of all of the adapting changes within industry that Benson would be responding to. And the ed spec's response to that is that we looked at right sizing our spaces, our components of the program, to support those various program needs. And that goes from classroom spaces, which can support a wider range of programs, to more specific labs and shops that support CTE and those specific programs. And then there's the support spaces that help tie that, some of that together. Another piece of input that we received was less compartmentalization. The current school has a number of small rooms and spaces that are broken up within the programs, and we want to not hamper flexibility and adaptability in the future. And so, we're being thoughtful about designing these programs into what we're calling suites, and these suites would allow maximum flexibility with structural grid that can support that to be as open and flexible as possible, and locating our structure and our infrastructure that are the things that we don't want to move because it costs a lot to move them later, in key locations to avoid hampering that flexibility over time. Within those suites, then, we have those components, the classrooms, labs, and spaces that make up a suite. And that flexibility and adaptability is just, and adaptability has been a common theme throughout the design process recently, and we've always had that in mind, but the question is how are we effectively implementing that? And so, our ed spec is now reflecting an idea that with that structural grid and with our site, our infrastructural systems, that we're being thoughtful about sizing them to allow for future expansion or adaptations, that we're not only providing what is needed today, but providing some capacity for what might be needed in the future. And then providing greater collaboration through spatial adjacencies. This has been a key component in how we've thought about updating the master plan as well, that we want to be, making sure that core academic classes and CTE programs are working together to collaborate and that we create some synergies there. And so, Lauren will talk about the master plan in a moment, but in terms of how we're thinking about our suites, our CT suites, we want to have them located adjacent to these core academic classrooms and support spaces, science labs, and others, to support our STEM and STEAM approach to teaching and learning. And then planning for growth, not necessarily by expanding all of the existing programs, but allowing for flexibility of perhaps new programs in the future that might need to be identified, or that current programs that might adapt to be able to respond to the increase in capacity from current size to seventeen hundred students. And so, by defining our suites in a size that is in parity with each other, that are sized to support the program needs from a smaller to larger program, but making sure there's a consistency within them so that one program that are similar size could either be, fit into various port locations within the school, or could support a program that we have not even identified yet that could fit within that space. We know it could work within that space based on tours we've had, other research we've done on potential alterations. We've also identified fifteen thousand square feet of what we're calling future CTE space, and that's, you know, opening day for Benson is a few years off because of design and where it lands in the launch cycle, so between now and then, what programs might be coming in at that time to support the increased capacity? We haven't defined that yet. We're looking for opportunities where that definition may come from, but we've identified space for that to allow that to happen. And so, we've met with department leads at the school, CTE teachers and core academic teachers, to talk about this suite concept. We've done hands-on activities with them to understand the kind of the spatial needs and how they can collaborate together, and we're at the beginning of this process, but it's something we look to continue working with them on as we develop the design. So, real quickly, we have four suite types. Suite type A is a thirty-six-hundred square foot space to support some current programs, as well as could work for other future programs if desired. Fifty-four-hundred square feet, seventy-two-hundred square feet, and then fourteen-thousand-four-hundred square feet. So, these are some example layouts. We're working with defining those suites in more detail as we continue forward, and the ed spec has diagrams that also illustrate some adaptations for current programs on an opening day scenario. So, to wrap up our ed spec, we have a program summary here, which illustrates the suite types that are identified on the very top there and the teaching stations those support. There are a number of other resources, such as makers lab and teacher planning and other educational support. We have general classrooms and science labs, and then we have special education, ELL classrooms as well. So, when you take the summation of that, it leads to that three hundred and sixty-eight thousand square foot within, falling within that range that we are targeting for the size of the school. When we look at capacity, we have, we're using the comprehensive utilization table as a guide for how that is calculated for all your other schools, so that we are on par with how that is looked at, and you see that these fall within that range of seventeen hundred students. For Benson, when we apply those numbers to that, we are within that range, so that's how we are calculating capacity to be consistent with the same methodology.
So, I'd like to share a little bit of the evolution of the planning at Benson. This first diagram is really just to orient you toward the school. North has always been up on all of these diagrams. The darker blue is the CTE space, and as you can see, there's kind of a divide between the east side of the school and the west side of the school, in which CTE is somewhat separated from other areas. Brown is performing arts. You see the media in a sort of cranberry color. Light blue are existing classrooms. Green is science. The sort of peachy color are athletics, and gray is the support area. And all the diagrams we'll be sharing with you, these are, have common colors, just to get you oriented. This next diagram is, I think, a good illustration of the kind of evolution of how we've been thinking about Benson. The first being the existing floor plan that we just touched on, again, CTE to the east, core academics and PE, performing arts, et cetera, to the west. In the initial master planning, there was a bit more of overlap between those programs. We'd understood that was an important aspect. I think in this diagram, this is the center diagram that I'm referring to here, the core is largely to the west still, but an upper level above the CTE programs was seen as some of those core academic facilities, again, trying to get a closer co-location. Based on direction from Board, from staff here, we now have been really pushing that co-location much further in terms of where are core academic facilities and where is that CT, as you see on the right-hand diagram. Here, the CTE programs in the dark blue are surrounding that career, that courtyard area, but along those same wings of the school are now science labs, classrooms, special ed needs, teacher planning, a whole host of core aspects of the program to, again, begin to mesh or co-locate some of those much more closely. This next diagram is kind of a blow-up of that same slide. This happens to be the northeast corner of the site. You can see the former master plan on the left, in which manufacturing, electric are across a corridor from one another. Now, you'll see the, a couple of the suites that Joe was just referring to in terms of supporting variable CTE programs with science labs, classrooms, and even breakout learning areas to try and, again, begin to bridge these programs so that there's a greater deal of collaboration. This next slide is our current master plan, and I want to make very clear, this is a diagram. This is an iterative process. This is not a design. It's a point in time in which we've been gathering information and hearing great feedback from our DAG committee, our oversight committee, most of the people. And I'd like to just give a quick orientation. Again, north is up, Northeast Twelfth is on the left, to the west, and Fifteenth Avenue on the east, Buckman Field on the south. Starting at the front of the school, Joe touched on this, we have a major access problem to the school. You're up steps and, you know, up a whole flight of unaccessible areas. So, one of the critical periods, issues in terms of the school is to create that welcoming entry. So, you'll see this sort of X-shaped diagram. That implies a notion of ramps moving up gradually, so all people are able to access the front of the school. We've also heard from students that that lawn is a great place, but there's really not a place to be there, and so we've created an upper terrace, a bit pulled back from the street, a safe place for kids, but also a prominent outlook, a place to say, we're here, this is our place. Into the main historic building, again, along the west facade, you can see the gray there. Those are largely student-supported administrative areas, a welcoming place, obviously a point of safety and security upon entry to the school. We've reinforced and supported the historic school, the character of that grand presence of Benson. The auditorium, of course, is on the north edge, you'll see in brown, and the whole physical education is located where it is, of course, in the existing gyms. We can use a lot of those facilities, they're right-sized. The auditorium, of course, is very large, and that will be an ongoing discussion, I'm sure. Moving eastward from the main building, you'll notice a new social courtyard. This is a very safe place, off of student commons, a place to gather, a place to get outside on a good day, a covered porch even for a rainy day, a social place for kids, a real orientation place, but also critically, it gives daylight to all the learning areas around it, and that's been an important aspect of the rethinking of Benson to make sure we're aligning learning spaces with great daylight, because the old building allowed that. Hopefully, many of the buildings can support that as well. To the north of that social courtyard is the media center and counseling area. To the south, of course, is the main gym. Both those spaces will be, will receive, oh, I should say, all of the existing spaces at Benson will need major remodel. We've touched on some of the unreinforced masonry, their seismic issues, almost all of the systems in this hundred-plus-year-old- Most all of the systems in this hundred-plus-year-old building are well past their prime and need serious work. The yellowish-orange area, sort of embedded in the middle of the plan, is the student commons. And we like to think of this more as a learning commons, as well as a social commons. We heard very clearly as we talked to students about the importance of a place in the center, but what's the heart of this school? Right now, as I'm sure you know, the student cafeteria is in a lower-level basement, poor light, not a terribly popular place, and not a place that says, we're about kids, we're about students, we're about learning. The commons is supported by, of course, some of the support activities, the kitchen, the back-of-the-house custodial facilities. It's also a double-height space, so we're trying to link those upper and lower floors with some of the aspects of space as we rethink the future Benson. The north wing of CTE is also illustrated here. You can see a couple of larger suites. Again, most of the suites that need access, for example, construction, automotive, manufacturing, there are big, big service aspects to those facilities. They face on the courtyard, so we can have good truck access, good delivery, good movement of the needs of those programs. As we touched on earlier, along that wing of CTE facing the courtyard is now some of the core academic facilities, again, trying to create that critical co-location, collaboration between hands-on learning and the more academic side. The old foundry building on the far northeast corner, excuse me, is also seen as part of that career technical pathway. To the south is another CTE wing linking a large CTE suite, again, with core academic facilities, and ultimately, the radio program is housed in the southeast corner of the lot, and that is intended to stay. There's a lot of important equipment in that. It's expensive to move, and it's working, so the thought was, let's restore it and keep it going. The next slide is looking at the upper level of the proposed master plan. Here you can see, again, on the west, northwest corner, the upper level of an auditorium, a row of academic, core academic facilities in the historic main building, and the upper level of the gymnasium to the southwest. In the center, again, is that learning commons, social commons, upper level. So again, this is a two-story space linking the levels of the school. To the north of that is the health occupation program, one of the CTE suites. To the south, we've actually been able to open it up. Another one of the feedback points that we've heard from both students and alums is, open this building to the south, connect to the field in a more meaningful way. And so there's a bit of a south courtyard that, south plaza that opens there. And again, along the, both north and south CTE wings are career technical programs facing the courtyard, and again, some of the core facilities on the outer edges of that. Our last image in terms of the building itself is the lower level. This is, if you will, beneath the auditorium and the old gym. We'd originally showed some of the wraparound services to the northwest beneath the auditorium. Just recently, in one of the DAG meetings, we heard pretty clearly that we wanted the health program, health clinic, I should say, with better lighting and more access to the public. So we'll be, we're still looking at some of these diagrams in terms of what's where. This also shows a large multipurpose area beneath the stage, again, on the northern edge of the lower level, addressing some of the potential needs of drama, or band, or even a career pathway in the performing arts. To the south, in the kind of peach-orange color, are some of the locker rooms, activity rooms supporting the physical education program, also the potential for a career technical suite beneath the gym. What kind of health programs or other programs can we build? That may be one of the future programs that Joe had touched on. The last image that we'd like to share this evening for the updated master plan is actually the site plan at Benson. I touched on the entry courtyard, its accessibility, and sort of prominence supporting that beautiful historic school. A social courtyard is a safe place in the center. The CTE courtyard, I failed to mention, there on the east side, between the two wings, is really about service, indoor-outdoor access. I know we've heard from several programs, construction, automotive, as examples, that, jeez, when the weather's good, we'd like to be outside, building, or working on a car. Certainly, we have major service needs being addressed through that facility. We've also begun to just explore some of the sustainable opportunities of this site. We know that we'll have stormwater detention issues that can become learning opportunities for kids. This is a hands-on learning school. Let's show how we look to the future as part of the design of this facility. So that's a fast run-through of the design today.
So about five nights ago, we had a design advisory group meeting, so it wasn't in included in our materials, because you got those ahead of time, but we have some feedback from that meeting to help share what we heard from the master plan.
Yep. So like Joe said, the updated master plan was presented to the design advisory group, where we had the opportunity to highlight things we liked, things that we questioned. Kylie and I will go over some of those items. In terms of positive feedback, I think overall, the group really enjoyed a lot of the adjacencies that are being created within these spaces. So for example, core academic CTE spaces being together, programs such as arts, engineering, construction, and architecture being close together. Again, this opportunity of being able to commingle a lot of these spaces to provide this collaboration opportunity, which goes back to some of those items that we highlighted within the guiding principles. The social courtyard and the CTE courtyard was a very positive thing. Anybody who walks around the campus of Benson understands that we are a unique school where a lot of the building is pressed upright against the sidewalk, and so minus that front, the front yard, Benson as a building is somewhat imposing as you walk around it. And so being able to provide these internalized outdoor spaces provides lots of opportunities for students and teachers to socialize as well as teach. And then the south plaza was another very positive thing, not only being able to provide, I guess, another formalized entry on that south side, especially coming from, like, say, the parking lot, also providing that opportunity to open out onto the track and onto Buckman Field.
We did have some adjustments to be considered. One that was recommended highly was social courtyard that was put into the master plan. A lot of students really, really enjoy the idea. It's really nice that at our school, especially now, the only open place we really have is our front lawn, and it's, it's just, it kind of sometimes feels unsafe here right by, a very busy area. Lloyd is very close. It's just, for high school students, it's very out in the public. To have a social courtyard was, it's an amazing thing to have. But we were talking about how it'd be nice if it was a covered area, because it is Portland, it does rain like six months, another nine months we're in school. It's going to become a giant, like, mud pit if it's not covered, and then so it's going to be, oh, if it's gross and it's muddy, no one's going to want to go out there, and then it just wastes that kind of space. So we definitely want to incorporate some kind of covered area, just so that, because it'll be a waste if it's not, so that would help with that. We talked also about, like, size of shop for the area of CTE programs. We were thinking, maybe like, a lot of people did have comment about, like, worrying about size of CTEs. We definitely want to make sure that, like, when we're doing it, we can incorporate, like, needs for CTE programs, especially if the program needs more space, like, ones like auto, that obviously you're working with cars, not like you're working with computers or small cars. And then we also talked a lot about, like, I was going to say, it was the, we talked about one that was so much, oh, the upstairs balcony, possibly using that space for something else. If you guys were, like, look at the master plans, there's a lot of space up there, and we were talking about, like, restoring it, this way the balcony can be, like, used. If we do somehow get a theater program, it comes on later on. Or if possibly we can maybe make the upstairs area something else, maybe put a classroom above it, this way we can help conserve space, especially if there's, it's like, it goes pretty far back, so if we can incorporate another area, and then maybe that could also be used in terms of, like, if we wanted to have a heavy admission space for our drama or possible music program, they can use that space as well.
So when we were shifting to budget, and one of the things that we've done, as Dan mentioned, is did a cost estimate in March, and we'll go over that in a moment, but how we're approaching this project, because we're in concept design, we don't have drawings to estimate from, it's narratives and these diagrams, we're using a cost model approach. And what that's basically doing is looking at trends in the, in school, high schools in the area, in the region, and what are kind of a low to high range that we're seeing in these various components, and then trying to identify where Benson falls within that range for the scope we know that it needs. So you can see the ranges will vary widely, and some more than others. Let's take, for example, site work, you know, site, every site is unique, so prices range greatly there. The good news for Benson is we don't have a lot of site work. It's pretty limited, so it's on the lower end of that range. But you, you know, you can see that range goes very high for a project, for instance, like Lincoln's, going to have very high site costs because of the nature of the project. So you can see how we're identifying where Benson falls in those categories. Where we are on the higher end is definitely in the structural component tree, because of the URM buildings, we have to reinforce, and a number of other seismic and structural needs for CTE programs, the heavier loads for equipment and projects is a consideration. And then you'll see, really in the mechanical, electrical, plumbing categories, being on the higher end of that, because of the higher needs for infrastructure for CTE programs, exhaust systems, dust collection systems. And also, as we talked earlier about planning for the future, a little redundancy and adaptability to those systems to be able to support things we may not even be anticipating today, but know could be needed in the future. So that's how we are identifying these costs, and when we total those up, we get to where we stand today in these elements. This diagram illustrates how that budget has evolved over time, from early master planning to where we are today. And I think the key thing I wanted to focus on here is that in March, we had that estimate update. We worked with OSM to identify targets to really bring that into a one-hundred-and-ninety-five million hard cost number. And then what you're seeing now is that as we've gotten this feedback and incorporated more infrastructural redundancy and sizing, we've included the additional future CTE space, and then we've also increased some contingencies and temporary phasing allowances. That has pushed that up a little bit higher again, so that's where we're at, the two-hundred-and-thirty million hard cost budget. The goal is to try to bring that back down again. And so what we, we have not, we have not definitively said what those are, but we've identified those items that we consider, and asked to come up with ideas that might be considered enhanced scope items. And so we went to our steering committee and said, here's a list of things that we could consider enhanced, that go beyond, you know, beyond the kind of minimum ed spec need, or could be things that are unique to this project. So for instance, we have ideas such as the food closet closet. That's currently a space that's not there at the school, but they have, you know, they carve out space for that, and in working with our steering committee, the thought was, maybe that's something that could also be carved out again. But again, we're not providing any recommendations here, it's just what the steering committee has inputted on these various scenarios. And so it includes the future CTE space, restoration of the balcony, and then the multipurpose large meeting room, and then that increased infrastructure redundancy and flexibility were items that we just identified as these were potential enhanced scope items. You can see that it ranges from the steering committee's perspective, from a preferred to a not recommended at the bottom, so preferred at the top, not recommended at the bottom. We also proposed these to our design advisory group, just to get their input on what their priorities were. And so this slide is an activity that was done with our design advisory group.
And so when we looked at this as a design advisory group, again, we had the opportunity to prioritize these items for items that we most desired versus ones that were least desired. And so if you look at the top two, with number one being, so that multipurpose space that was shown in the lower level beneath the existing auditorium, there was a priority towards that, to also making sure that that space could be large enough to possibly support, say, a future music program. Right behind that, another big priority amongst the group was making sure that the correct infrastructure is placed within the building from day one, to make sure that if there are any future program changes or adaptability, that the school can do that more readily and more easily without having to incur a very large cost if something comes down the road with a new program or something, and then the school can't adapt to that. And then shortly right after that, again, is this more emphasis on just providing more square footage for CTE, and I think a lot of that does fall back on this idea that, again, we talked about Benson today, we don't know what Benson's going to be when it opens, we don't know what Benson's going to be twenty years down the road, but making sure that we can provide those spaces and the square footage, so Benson can adapt and continue to grow as a CTE and STEAM school.
Yeah, and then from the student perspective, a lot of them did appreciate the use of the multipurpose and music aspect. A lot of people do think that because we are Benson, only a lot of the music, like, admin, I guess, or interest, I guess you could say, but a lot of students are actually really, really into it, and to see that just even considered in the master plan was really, really, like, encouraged. A lot of students, like I said before, had asked for the covered social courtyard. It's not, like, highest on the list, but I did know that, like, like, we ranked these in groups of about, like, I would say, like, three to six people, and ones that, like, ranked social, the social court being covered higher did have students, more students within it. I know that, like, five students were really, really into it. Out of how many, or, students are there exactly?
Oh, we're, thirteen.
Thirteen. So nearly, like, half the students did appreciate that. Yeah, that was the student input. And then the increase, like you said, and then the just CTE space was also really appreciated by students as well.
So I'm curious on the discussion about the tech center and the club and closet, was it not shared that that was a sort of base ed spec that was to be built into the A design?
No, it was. I think, like the other projects, we're just trying to do our diligence in saying, here are ideas, and that's why I say we don't necessarily have a recommendation or predisposition to that, it's just something that we included that currently is not onsite, and that we are bringing to the site. And knowing past conversations, that's important to the board, so, but we were just bringing it up as a one idea, again, and that's very, obviously, our input, our priority, so.
So is that space currently in?
It's currently in the master plan, yes.
Just curious, where do most students eat lunch now? In the hallways, like, everywhere else?
It kind of depends, like, so I know a lot of, like, students kind of just eat throughout, like, by the health box square and the library space is really popular. A lot of it has to do with, actually, like, we talked about before, natural lighting in our school is, we kind of feel like we're in a cement box at this point, but the health box square in the library, we have, like, a giant, like, skylight, and that causes natural lighting, so a lot of, that's the place where a lot of people go. They, a lot of people eat in health rooms, which is, like, the upstairs track, the health rooms are here, because those ones have windows all across their walls, so they have more natural lighting, so those are really popular. We have, like, clubs that meet at lunch day by day, like, there's not a single day where a club doesn't meet, so people eat in clubs, and then a decent amount of people eat in the cafeteria, not a lot though, like, considering, like, the actual number of people we have in our building, it's not a lot, but there, people aren't eating down there, but I would just say people are more spread out, and most people usually don't need to be on campus for lunch, they go out to eat, because they prefer eating on campus, so.
Somebody else brought this up, and I'll channel them, or they can bring it up. Is if we're moving towards electric cars, would you want the electrical space next to the automotive space?
That was specifically considered, I know, and there was a reason why you didn't go with that, and I don't remember what the reason was, but I know it's been considered.
Well, electric does have the desire to have solar panels on the roof, that they can actually be part of the program, so that was one of the driving factors for putting electrical on the top floor, the second floor, so it could be adjacent. We did talk about some electric potential for, in the future, that would be located in automotive.
The way the program's currently run, electrical is more based on residential and commercial, you know, mostly residential electrical systems. Auto is more car-based, so I imagine all moving to electric cars would be more in the transportation mode. But that, the nice thing about the flexibility of the CTE suites, as we have it designed now, is you could imagine that components of each could work together in a suite or adjacent suite, so.
suite, so that's kind of what we're trying to build into, is that ability to adapt to that potential.
And also, sort of the future CTE space, and I feel really small-minded coming up this piece of it, but, you know, Madison initially, they have a construction tech program there, and the initial space design was, was half of what they needed, and they had to shoehorn around to get a full build out, and they had to give up some stuff. And, and here we have a design that says, well, let's throw in a whole bunch of, not a whole bunch, but, you know, substantial sort of extra space in case we need it. My God, I wish we had that at all of our schools, but we don't. And the budget piece, you know, we, we've had to value engineer the hell out of every one of our schools so far. And, and, you know, again, there's that, that pull between, God, that'd be nice, yeah, flexibility, future program, and the budget reality is like, that, that hasn't happened at any one of our schools. And I've been on, like, a part of at least three day processes watching, you know, watching that happen, and it's, it's, I just want to lay that out there.
And you think something that should be considered though is that, I, I know the construction program, since I didn't know, I don't know anything about it, but something that is, I think, also looked at is that Benson's CTE programs, I feel like are equally with me to other schools when, I know we have our construction, like, some of our construction class here today, and I know that construction programs at other schools, they see that as more of what, like, I guess what our sophomores do, they build breadboards, they build tote boxes. But I feel like Benson's construction program, since we're actually, like, trying, like, I know we've built several, like, three, I think, so far, and I'm more of, like, Benson houses. So, like, I think the future, like, CTE space, I see what you mean by, like, other schools not having that space, and I totally understand that, and I see what you mean. But at the same time, I think Benson has to be considered is that Benson is a polytechnic school, we are supposed to have, like, the specialty of those things, and that our CTE programs, I feel like, are on a different level than I think what they're being categorized with other schools. So when, like, thinking about CTE space, I, I totally get what you mean by, like, the space, and I totally see what you mean by, like, use it because we have it, but at the same time, I feel like with other schools, it's, it's hard to make that comparison because the programs are really not as.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking comparable programs, even though I'm gritting my teeth a little bit in how you talk about other schools' programs, but more about the luxury.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah.
Well, I, I have, like, a couple things, so I do want to express just, I don't know if it's time, but I do want to express my, like, dedication to having these social cour- courtyards. I think that's a very valuable space to have within this plan. I know, we have the school, Cleveland I go to, we have absolutely no outside space to... I use, always use example of if kids stressed out in class and something, they need a five-minute break, need to go outside, we end up just walking rounds in the hallways and disrupting other classes and not being able to go anywhere because we have nowhere to go. So I think these social cour-, courtyards are a great idea, especially having it in the center of the school, so kids know where to go and have somewhere to go. And I also just wanted to pick your brain a little about how you think. So we have the huge commons area, which I'm also a large supporter of. How do you think, like, future Benson students will use that with the courtyard? Like, is that, do you think some of the commons is somewhere students are actually really gonna be able to use and go to?
I, I really think they would, because I feel like, like, a lot of clubs, when you want to meet at certain times, like during a flex tutorial, like, it's sometimes really hard, especially on the size of your club and what you plan to do, it's really, really hard to meet. Like, I know, like, our super, like, Smash Club, or, like, they have, like, three TVs lined up on a single table, and, like, they're all, like, on stools and really crammed together. And so, like, I feel like if we had a space that's just really, really open, all the students, they can use it for, like, extracurricular activities, and then plus, like, within our district, we are given that time for flex tutorial, and sometimes if you have nothing to do, but, like, let's say you have homework, but, like, the library, I know sometimes you either get really, really packed, or sometimes, like, it's just really crammed together, sometimes I don't feel that way, to have just a really open space that you can just go socialize, be at school, but not feel like you're pressured to be in a classroom, I think is really nice.
And I'm gonna connect to Scott's comment too, that this 15,000 square feet of future CTE space is something that I think needs to stay within the plan.
Yeah, I appreciate what I know has been a journey of gathering input and conversations and a lot of thinking, and appreciate the fluid modular design. I love the fact that our students will have modern, open, you know, more 24th century-oriented spaces. A question I've been asking every time we talk about Benson, so I'm clear, I ask every time, we're building a comprehensive focus option high school with enhanced CTE program, and that's how I've always understood it. And every time we've talked about high schools, we're referring to ed specs, these are features we believe should be on parity across all of our campuses. So the area I want to speak to first is visual and performing arts. I don't see music practice rooms, I don't see a choir room, I don't see a dance studio, I don't... So if this is gonna be a comprehensive high school, I don't want it to be an afterthought, that maybe that little bit of space up on top of the balcony, or maybe that multipurpose room can be a place where an orchestra could meet. And I don't want it to be sort of an afterthought if we decide down the road to maybe create opportunities for students in the arts, that that, that may be something that could come true. I do appreciate that there's media arts and that there's pathways, and that's very forward-thinking, and I love that. But I also want to, don't want to deny kids who attend any of our high schools from having access to visual and performing arts. So I would want to see that baked in from the get-go, and I do think we need to have a conversation about, a typical comprehensive high school has multiple FDEs teaching those content areas. And at Benson, we have one FDE. So I don't know if that's equitable. As an arts advocate, I just want to push for from the onset, how we're observing those ed specs for our comprehensives in the Benson design.
From a design perspective, we love that.
Great.
But the challenge is there's been no clarity of that should be at Benson, so this is...
We have comprehensive high school ed specs. I understood.
We, we, message received.
So just maybe follow on to that. I know historically, one of the reasons why Benson didn't have that is they had a lot of approved additions for their CTE programs because of some of the, like, safety requirements and the class size requirements, that when the FTE came, that actually Benson had more FTE in these other areas, and so that, that was sort of the trade-off. So this was historically so that their extra FDE or their, the approved additions were to fully staff in ways that the other schools weren't staffed, so, which is, there was a trade-off. But I guess, so that's just a response, so, the staffing, staffing piece, so that there was some equity in how much staff each of the high schools had, first student body. I guess I want to go back to Scott's question about the budget. I think the design's great and it's super exciting. A big, great place to go to, to high school. Just to, the perennial question we have is around the budget, and so, I guess I'm gonna address this to you, Dan, is, when you look at that, where are, you think about what we, the discussions we've had on the, about the other high schools to date, Lincoln and Madison approvals, we sort of said some, like, these are gonna be our base standards, even though our community may or may not want something, this is what we expect at all the high schools. So if you take what we've said in the past as being the base, what, where are the places where, you know, is, is the places where we may be able to get some cost savings to get, try and get closer to, to budget, and we're obviously we're not gonna get back to the budget? So to Scott's point, is it the extra CTE space, or is it somewhere else?
Those are some of the spots, some of the, the bigger dollar places that we've pursued as potential options are the additional square footage, so the 15,000 square foot E space. The designing in this robust flexibility, if you feel, has a premium to it, that your, your typical building would not have. So that has cost components as well, also has big benefits, of course, with flexibility and depth of way that we've talked about. And also some of the spaces that are unique to Benson, such as the balcony of the auditorium, we certainly would like to keep that, but if that's not a heavily programmed space now, that might be an opportunity to add a classroom where we could move, move space that is new construction into an existing footprint. So those are all things that we're taking a look at, plus some other ideas that we have, that we'll need a little more time to, to kind of bake and vet. But whatever they are, they are going to be hard decisions, and so that's why we want to be able to put some more thought into them and get some more input on what might be acceptable, what might not be. So when we come back, we have more defined options with more input.
I did just want to respond to Julia. Benson had to make the compromises on FTE and the trade-offs between arts programming and career and technical ed programming because it was so limited in size. Enrollment had been capped, and when you have that, given the way that we fund these programs, you don't have the options. When Benson had 1,700 kids, it had one of the most robust arts programs in the city. So, yeah. And we certainly see the demand, if you go to the eighth grade info nights, there are a lot of very painful questions about what kind of arts there are and aren't, and why.
I know there might not be a clear distinction here, as clear as it used to be, but for a typical Benson student, how many, what percent of your day is in a CTE course, and what percent is in a core curriculum? And I know, you know, there's math that is sort of in the shop floor math kind of stuff going on, but what's the, is half, half your day in CTE and half in, you know, English, math, and all that other boring stuff?
We have one period, so basically, you have one period a day throughout the four years of, you're at Benson, where you're in your CTE program. Freshman year, we have, like, the freshman eight, and you rotate through eight of our majors by quarter. Some, for, you do the same thing the freshman year, go to your top four, and you switch at the semester. And then juniors and seniors, you have your major. Some periods require more than one, so I know that health occupations requires instead of two periods out of your eight, you go to three. And then I know that construction has, like, it's two periods, but then there's an additional one you can take, and, yeah, there's an additional period you can't take, so that, that one can take up to three periods. But, and then I know also manufacturing, you can take an extra, like, I have to go to what it's called, I think, engineering course, which is related to manufacturing as well. So basically, all of them require two, and then you can have the option to take third period.
So is freshman year one or two?
Freshman, freshman year, you're still doing one every single day.
Okay, and sophomore year is?
One every single day.
Okay, and then it's two to three for?
Two to three, so it's like, it's, you have one of your, you have one class that you should see every single day, no matter what grade, and no matter what, and then when you're a junior and senior, if you get to a certain major, on one day, you might have two periods instead of one, unless you double major. If you double major, then there's a possibility of having...
Yeah, those are crazy.
Right, right, that's, that's too much.
So I think you guys are doing a great job at doing what the board told you to, and my concerns are about what the board told you to, which has to do with, well, the, one of the recommendations from the bond committee that was also in the board resolution for the bond, was that we have an enrollment plan for the whole district of high schools to make sure that all our high schools are fully populated. And that's, we don't have that. So it's hard for me to say, go ahead with the Benson plan when we don't have an enrollment Two, we don't have a district CTE plan, so I'm still not sure how you choose which programs to go in here, and that's, that's a concern. And then there's the, the question of what we do with Alliance and the other multiple pathway programs too, that's still very much up the air. So we have kind of dueling staff recommendations, one, one for one part of the staff saying, this looks good, it's got your signature on it, and another one that says, well, instead of 1,700, 1,350, with, with room for the multiple pathways programs. So we, we got stuff to figure out. And then the other piece is, again, what's the right model in terms of comprehensive hub or hybrid? And I think there's, there's pros and cons there that we haven't done our due diligence And to me especially, if there's extra space, I want to see, I would want to see it opened up to more kids. A student who's a freshman or sophomore and figures out, I love working on cars, if they're not at Benson already, what's, what's in it for them? Stick around and wait till you go to community college? I think there are considerations like that that we need to consider. So that's, you know, I'm, I'm having trouble saying, we're doing it December 11th and saying we're ready to go, and I don't take that decision lightly.
Thank you. I would respond to that Benson does take in students as sophomores if they're interested in, in transferring at that point. And it doesn't have a lot of students who pursue that option. The option is, for a variety of reasons, not as well-implicized as it should be, but Benson is certainly doing that now. On the Alliance and other multiple pathways idea, I think that we are very clearly perpetuating the same kind of giving the multiple pathways the leftovers that we have been doing for forever with these programs, because the program shows a one-to-one swap with multiple pathway students and Benson students. And you can't do that, because when you look at the multiple pathway students' needs, on a per-square-foot, per-student basis, they need much, much more space than Benson students do, even when you factor in all the career and technical ed space that Benson students need. And it really gets my goat, because I think it shows one of the big problems that we have as a district, which is that we look at our teachers, and we look at our children, and we see widgets, plugging in one, plugging in another, what does it matter? As, actually, a, a parent was yelling at me again today about Cleveland High School, where, again, this last year, we had the issue of enrollment projections. They ended up saying, ah, yes, we have someone who can speak to them. Seven teachers laid off in, in June, come August, oh, what do you know, we need to hire seven teachers back. But hey, it's all good, because they're completely interchangeable, they're just widgets. I'm a little sick of this, and I think we very much need a much more thoughtful multiple pathway solution.
So, so, yeah, I mean, I, I don't see how multiple pathways fits in here at all.
Well, if we could just clarify, there haven't been stakeholders that have been engaged in this design, have they?
Right, but.
No.
Yeah, I get that, but a little late in the game. So, I mean, I do worry if we're gonna, I worry about shoehorning. So I, I guess I echo a lot of Scott's concerns, like, there's a lot of pre-work that was supposed to have been done that hasn't been done. And that's not your fault in any way. It's really not anybody's fault here. It's, it just is at this point. I, I would be very interested in exploring the hybrid model and, and I guess my question would be, are there design implications that have to be considered? So my understanding is that we don't have to actually nail down the programmatic pieces for months already. But, but the design work is moving along presumably. So are there any design implications if we use some, the hybrid model to some degree, to any degree, you know? Like, I have no idea what that would mean in terms of usage of space, what you have to do, whether you could just, I mean, I don't, so, there you go.
Is it the hybrid model inclusive of our alternate pathways? I mean, so, my concern is.
No, no. The hybrid would be, like, there's, there's a comprehensive.
Not a comprehensive, and.
And, you know, the bulk of the students would be comprehensive, but then there would be the ability for other students, it would be some hub component.
Well, I go back to, I don't know how we displace some of our most vulnerable students.
So I feel like we're conflating different things here. I think it was, there are different ways to play CTE, and I think we went over some of the ways that districts do that. We are talking about an entirely different Benson Polytechnic if we're going to consider a hybrid or any other model. We've talked about enhanced CTE, and maybe we think about how we open up that opportunity, but there's something distinct about a four-year pathways and the way that they play CTE at Benson that works for our students and the way they built their instructional program there. And that's all a separate issue from what I hope we don't do each time that we are in this conversation about design for a new school that we're excited about, is that it displaces a program and we don't solve for that issue upfront.
Right.
In a way that respects and similarly takes care of a supportive space and meets their needs too. And so staff constrained by the absence of a building online, however, if we want to move to quickly explore what those options are, we have a small sense of what those are that could fit the timeline, but I feel like that's a conversation we also need to have with the community.
Yes, great, great.
Well, we need to have those conversations, and it's hard, I think, to move this without.
And if there are some guiding factors or principles that go with a discussion like that around things that are important, I've heard centrally located or accessible in transportation, that have support spaces that would serve our students, that would, you know, all of those features, and I don't want to list them out because frankly, I don't want to make assumptions, what are those and how could those be met? I wish we hadn't sold Washington High School around the corner, for instance. But there, there could be other possibilities depending on what commitment we also have to that community of students.
I think that there are very doable solutions for multiple pathways, ones that would put them in a much better position. But I also want to make the point, if we're looking at increasing career and technical ed opportunities, we desperately need to be looking at opening up those opportunities during summer school. We are letting this enormous resource lie fallow, three months, just sitting three months out of the year. And the idea that summer school exists in this district only for credit recovery is a complete fiction. And we know perfectly well, it's not being used that way now. It's being used as a subsidy for our richer schools, is what it boils down to. I won't walk you through it now, but I can after the meeting if you want. We really have to reassess how we do summer school in this district.
Well, if, just because we've had these same conversations about trimming down each of our other schools, to entertain the idea of 15,000 square feet of optional space, there's got to be some compelling reason of the benefit that they would have system-wide. So I love the idea of really playing extended learning and that we open up summer opportunities for our students across the district, including our eighth-grade students, our middle-grade students who benefit from some STEM summer academies in the same way I believe we should be providing arts academies in December and really give our students that kind of experience and create those opportunities.
Actually, the Benson alumni got a couple of cohorts of middle school kids to come in during the summers for that kind of experience about two years ago.
So we have some examples.
So, yeah, it worked very well. And, you know, again, with the 15,000 square feet, well, how many kids does Madison have And you're building Madison for 1,700. You're putting in space for growth. You didn't have 1,700 kids at Franklin when you rebuilt Franklin. You're putting in space for growth. Benson's been cut off at the knees for a dozen years because its enrollment's been capped. Benson is going to need space for growth. And especially, and Lou Patrus is here, he can talk to this for a long, long time, I'm sure. The, the CTE majors do not all individually have infinite capacity to grow as overall student enrollment grows. You can't have 80 kids majoring in construction all at the same time, or you really are going to start having, you know, kids cutting off their hands.
Okay.
Yeah. You have to grow incrementally, and as you do that, you're going to have to add other majors.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut, cut this off because we're not going to finish tonight. So we obviously have to have another work session. Right, and so we'll figure out when.
So my comment is about what I would like to see at the, another work session.
Go for it.
Which is, I assume with academics, which has been, again, largely absent from our design processes sadly too often. What's the difference in student preparation in different CTE programs for a comprehensive model like Benson currently has versus even if we went with a hybrid for a non-comprehensive? What are the skills and abilities that come out of the Benson program versus a non-Polytechnic high school track?
I mean, CTE screen?
Yeah. I think that would be very helpful.
I just want to be clear on your question, how are the CTE outcomes different at Benson as compared to the CTE pathway at another comprehensive place?
At a, quote, neighborhood high school.
Okay. Okay, so, so, Jose, I'm a little works and magic in finding a time. So we, we got, we got an email this evening, and I saw that we have one, I haven't read it yet. I'm guessing none of us have read it yet, so some of the remaining questions might be addressed by that email. I'm guessing there are others. So can we, if you have additional questions that you want to have answered in the follow-on work session, can you send them in, including everybody? Send them to Yvonne, let's see, see everybody. Okay?
So I have a suggestion about the resolution as well, is that as sort of the basis for the discussion, so if we're working towards approval of a resolution, that we have a draft one, that we all look at that and in the context of our questions and the answers, think about, you know, is that the resolution we, you know, want to approve? There's a question that currently isn't structured, it's, it's just a straight comprehensive high school, the multiple pathways isn't there, so that would be, need to be added if that decision, that's the staff's recommendation. But I would think that we'd want to come to the next meeting with a, whatever the next iteration of the staff recommendation in, in the resolutions, if the board could.
Well, what's challenging in developing a resolution or a draft, Director, for members is we haven't heard a consistent or consensual thinking from the board.
We haven't heard from staff either.
Well, I would say the staff, so it reflects the current staff resolution as the base.
Given the discussion today, if we're working with all things being the same in a modernized building, that's what it would be.
Are you talking about the recommendation you gave or a previous resolution?
There was, you, there was a draft resolution, and there was also a recommendation. The recommendation is not reflected in the resolution.
Right.
Because, so, if the recommendation from the staff is X, then we should have a resolution that reflects that, that, a draft that reflects that. And then I also think that's an opportunity, just to, the point Scott raised about the enrollment plan, I would like to add some language so that we get some structure around the enrollment discussion because I think it's very unfair to have, what's happened to date is sort of this negotiation between the high school principals in a very informal process that's not very transparent to the community. So, you know, as we think about what needs to be baked in to the, to the resolution to get to an approval, it'll be the next step.
Okay, so it seems to me that in the next work session, we're going to have to make some decisions. We're going to have to have enough information so that we can make some actual decisions about three things. The model, is Benson going to be only comprehensive? Is it going to be a hub or is it going to be a hybrid? And we've got to make that decision, right? Second, what's, what are we doing with multiple pathways? Are we assuming they're going to be in the building or not? And three, the enrollment, what are we going to do about enrollment? And what, how big are we going, you know, assuming it's comprehensive? Or, you know, I mean.
Right, so I just want to be realistic, Chair, around multiple boards that start and have been struggling with enrollment balancing because we're a neighborhood district. So in theory, we're constantly making those boundaries fluid to adjust for capacity. In many districts, you do have capacity setting done centrally, and that hasn't been the mechanism here, and those capacities shouldn't be set at the local level by individual sites. And Benson, we're looking at a long on-ramp here, so there's plenty of opportunity for adjustments along the way, but we need to sort of frame that out.
Right, I mean, we're designing a building with a certain capacity. What's the capacity? How we get there, when we get there?
Correct.
That's a whole other thing, but we got to build a building. So what are we, what are we building? So, right? I mean, that's what we need to talk about the next work session. And, and I'm thinking around the model stuff. We're going to have to resolve this, like, what are we doing? And, and we need enough information. You sort of introduced the topic last time, but now we got to bring home. Okay, and I'm not going to take any more comments because we're already at 9:30.
Are there any final directions for the facilities design folks? We heard their presentation. Curious if there's any homework you want to assign them. Because most of what we just talked about are follow-up programmatic questions.
Well, I guess, yeah, I mean, my, my only question is, you know, if we were to even consider the hybrid model, what design implications would there be? And I have no idea. Not, so, it's sort of a thought exercise.
But we do know what comprehensive features need to be baked in. But we do know what comprehensive features need to be baked in.
Yes, yes, but, I mean, so, and I, I think it's a thought exercise. I wouldn't go out and draw any blueprints for anything.
I would include multiple pathways with that as well. Like, if that's an option, how can that be worked, like, in either of those situations, how can that be worked in?
If you don't have another option, then what would that look like?
Yeah, with enrollment.
So the other thing that I think the exercise that we had all the other schools go through is, so what beyond the basics is nice to have? And to, I think, Devin, most of those conversations, understand sort of what our baseline is. So what were the things that are nice and great to have that giving us a sort of a budget range?
Yeah, we could compare the comprehensive components of Benson to the other schools in that aspect. Obviously, the CTE portion is, is fluid, but.
Yeah, I think that that actually exists. Do you know how much space multiple pathways needs?
No, we don't.
Oh.
Okay.
114,000.
I'm going to stop. We're going to stop.
Okay. Are you in fact going to stop or is it going to?
We're going to stop.
Okay, okay.
We're going to take a public comment.
Okay.
Okay, do we have anybody with a public comment? We've got 10 minutes allotted.
There is a list.
There is a list, there is a list. Somebody give me the list. Okay, we have eight speakers signed up. Two minutes apiece, okay? And I'm going to cut you off in two minutes. So, Dave Kifah?
Kida. Yeah, well, thank you, I want to thank you guys for your ongoing and persevering work in this, seems like a monumental task in remediating and modernizing our facilities. I'd ask you please to honor the PPS information sheet that was published back in February of '17, the proposal to the voters, a $790 million bond, and specifically allocated 25% of that to Benson. We, the Benson community, share your frustration that less than 10% of that $790 million is left over to address the proposal that the Portland voters approved. Benson is the flagship CTE school in the state, a state that followed suit with Portland voters in supporting CTE with the passage of Measure 98. So it's not just a local issue, not even a state issue, it's a national issue. You'll recall that 98 meant to support grad rates and CTE, and our grad rates continue to improve even as we approach 90%. And that with, while composed of over two-thirds free and reduced qualifying students and minority students as well. I've been a part of the master planning committee since the get-go, I was the chair. From the very beginning, maybe five minutes into the first meeting, some of our more passionate folks were asking about those alternate programs and was the 1,700 going to be strictly Benson? And from the very beginning, all the way through, going back three years, this issue did not come up until just recently. So it's, it's really pretty late. We've been planning. We, as community participants in that volunteer panel, were instructed to go out and share back with the community what was going on and share back with the community that we were going to continue with the Benson that they knew of the past. And share back that there would be a future plan for those alternative schools. In the proposal to rebuild our school, at some point in time, those programs are going to have to get displaced to accommodate the phasing. It'd be extremely unfair to. to them to displace them and then bring them back. There are options to give them a permanent home, and they deserve that. They should get that. It would be the best thing for them.
Sorry. Thank you.
Maybe next time, leave a little bit more time for the community.
Okay. Dwayne Davis?
Luke Hotchkiss?
Yes. All right, trying to be quick. I graduated from Benson. I went to Aquilina Green and Tubman and Beach. My daughter's going to go to Peninsula next year. It's my sixth-year teaching ability construction back at Benson. Six of our kids in our major are here tonight. I knew I wanted this job when I was a student at Benson in the late '90s, and I feel like I had the best job in the whole school district. I feel very fortunate to be here. No matter what is decided by the board for the future of the school, I intend to continue to do my best to teach safe and effective tool use, print reading, construction math, problem-solving work ethic, and other free apprenticeship duties, to whatever students walk through the door, whatever door, I'm assigned to work behind. I'm grateful for the opportunity to put young people to, for success in living with career paths that do not require a bachelor's degree. Dave and I took our class of seniors, which coaches with Dave, to the Plum Ridge State Feathers Local 290, whom Andrea and mom works for. And I was even surprised myself at how technically demanding that career path is. To be able to work with a high degree of precision with complex three-dimensional shapes of high-pressure supply lines that will later carry deadly chemicals in manufacturing facilities like Intel is no simple mundane task. It's challenging, involves a mix of hands-on skills, computer skills, and a strong work ethic, I would not comment. This path gives students hope. They can achieve an income and life for themselves upon graduation from high school and not have to wait another five, 10 years past their 18th birthday for independence, as the college for all models has resulted. And training and preparation in students for this outcome is what gets me out of bed every morning. Our world needs tangible hope without crippling death. Students at Benson have a chance for that. The districts and school boards have and are now continuing to question whether, or why, or how we exist, undermining cripples everything we are trying to accomplish. Don't get me wrong, if you want us to permanently share space with Alliance, or be a part-time skill center, or some hybrid model, we'll do that. Absolutely. But it will not be as effective as simply taking the shackles off that have been on us for over a decade. And this next part, it's going to be a little awkward, but we're going to try without getting fired. The community partners at the district is putting a lot of effort into reaching out and organizing that wants to work with our schools to produce the next round of workforce. Doesn't want to partner with Alliance. Is that the end?
All right.
Okay, sorry.
All right.
Okay.
All right. Cameron Ingram?
Yep. I'm currently one of the construction students over at Benson. I am a senior under Mr. Hotchkiss and Mr. Kida. And just within the past few months, especially ever since the Alliance program got, problem got brought up, it has been very much feeling, at least from a student perspective, of kind of scavengers fighting for scraps of what is left of our, well, what was supposed to be allocated to Benson's remodel. And just a lot of us are feeling like it's never going to happen within a useful time, that there was a lot of just pushing forward of other schools that didn't need it. When Benson hasn't been remodeled since, I think, late '70s, early '80s, that area, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Abigail Brown?
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am also a senior at Benson Polytechnic High School, also working, a student underneath Hotchkiss and Kida. I have a, I'm sorry, I'm not public speaking. I have a few opinions about whether, or how the school would be if it was just a community center. I'll shorten it down to one because of my short timeframe. I'm afraid of how it, the learning will work, whether it be every other day, every day, two hours per day. I'm afraid that on how it works, we won't have enough time to do what we do. For example, construction, we like to go out to our project and work at the house. And I asked one of my friends who are in Health Off what she thought about it. She said, "If you had an hour, if I had an hour, I don't subtract, sorry, my part, if I had a limited amount of time for the classes from beginning to end, along with teacher lessons, planned with that timeframe, they would be restricted to what we could be taught within that window of time." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Griffin Jackson?
Yes. You want me to go for you, Griffin? Yes. Can I finish? Or I'll try. So, Alliance students, not to say those students could not go on to succeed in any career, but they're going to be ready for that later, and there is no incentive for any organization to invest in them from the outside. PPS has to make that investment ourselves, and we should. The way Benson's structured is critical to our continued success. And we kind of talked about how many CT, basically two out of eight a day. And a student that graduates Benson has to have 4.75 credits in one program of study on average when they graduate, in addition to the other CTE classes that they take. The hybrid model, like, you need to move back the deadline for when students decide. The average age of starting to furnish, what we learned from trade unions, is 28-years-old. I don't feel like moving the needle from eighth grade to 10th grade is that significant of a difference for a student for when they want to decide what they want to do with their life. We, eighth graders right now have to decide in November. I don't know why that deadline is in April. That would be a significant change that would be a student's first decision-making point, rather than having it be, because PPS can't, I don't know why the deadline is in November, but for reasons of when students should make decisions about when they go to high school, why is that not in April? The choice is clearly yours, and I'm actually at peace with any decision that you make, but I just don't think the right hand knows what the left hand is doing. You talk about maximizing community partnerships on one hand, and taking apart the fabric, history, and continued potential Benson on the other, by making it either a hybrid skill center or co-locating with Alliance and multiple pathways. Please approve the master plan that I expect from both Benson that you were just presented with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Don't forget that thousands of dwelling units are going up in the area around Benson that's about to become a neighborhood school because of density.
Okay. All right. Thank everybody for hanging in there. It's, I know it's late. And we are adjourned in...